Afternoon, everyone. Please remain standing while the mayor's chaplain offers prayers.
At this time of prayer and fasting, we ask God to fill all the elected representatives of the city's wards with the grace of his Spirit as they debate the serious matters that are before them today. May they be listened to attentively and with respect, and may they speak openly, honestly, and without making derogatory comments about other members. May their deliberations bring about decisions that are good for the city of Preston and its citizens, who look to them for leadership that is supported by courage and humility. We pray also for peace throughout the world, and especially between those countries who are supposed to be allies. We pray for councillors and any member of the authority who have got, who are ill, or members of their family. Peace be with all those who are gathered here in this chamber today and every day. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend. Please be seated. Item one is Mayor's announcements. Now, I need to remind you that officers are recording the public part of this meeting today, which will again be uploaded to the councillor's YouTube, YouTube channel after the meeting. There are no plans for a fire alarm test. If you hear the alarm, please leave the building by the nearest exit. Please ensure mobile phones are switched off now. Restrooms are located on all floors, but please ask a member of staff for details should you require one. Members of the public, members and officers, you are reminded that under the openness of Local Government Bodies Regulations 2014, the press and public may film, audio record, photograph, and use social media whilst the meeting is in progress, progress, for party items only, and as long as no disruption is caused to the meeting. Anyone filming is asked to focus their attention on elected members rather than other visitors. Now, I am sure you have all heard about Sarah Mozynska, who was presented with the Young Citizen of the Year Award by the High Sheriff of Lancashire at a ceremony held at Lancashire Police HQ on the 25th of February. Sarah won the award for her work with the Foxton Charity, Centre Charity. Over the past seven years, Sarah has been a member of the charity's Youth Forum Board, where she has helped fundraise and project, and project plan, among other things. Sarah's passion and commitment have helped change lives, and one of her greatest achievements was her leadership in a successful bid for a £2.4 million grant to build a new community centre. I'd like to send my utmost respect to Sarah and congratulate her on the impact she has had on the community with her remarkable achievements. Now, another important event, on the 23rd of March, Sunday, 4pm, the Guilddale House is holding a charity music event. You're all welcome to attend, and there's loads of raffle tickets on sale. I'd also like to thank everyone who came and supported my Mayor's Ball charity civic bash. Butte pie was to die for, I tell you. It was a very successful raise, much needed funds, to support my mayoral charities. So thank you all once again. Now, may I remind members that they must not vote on any business relating to the calculation required for the setting of the council tax and related matters, an any decision which affects the council tax calculations, if they are in arrears of council tax at least two months since it became payable. Is there anybody in that category here? Finally, depending on how we get on with time, I may at some point adjourn the meeting for a comfort break. I don't envisage it, but we never know. Item two is declarations of interest. Are there any declarations of interest? Can members indicate if they have? Councillor Lanlos?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, on agenda item six, I just declare a personal interest that I am a private landlord.
Thank you. That noted. councillor Desai?
Same for me, Mr. Mayor.
Do you want to stand up and say that? Sorry.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, same for me.
Thank you, councillor.
Mr. Mayor, can you ask for the windows to be closed? We've had enough fresh air. Thank you.
Pardon?
Can you ask for the window to be closed, please?
Just hang on a minute. councillor Holmes? That's under any other business at the end, councillor, by the way.
Thank you. I also have a personal interest in item six as a private landlord.
That's noted, councillor Holmes. Councillor?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, private interest, landlord.
Have I got everybody? Are you saying something, councillor Potte? Oh. Sorry, I need to read the rest of this. As previously notified, paragraph 1056 of the Code of Conduct states that a member will not have a prejudicial interest if the matter relates to the setting of the council tax, as there is an exemption. Additionally, due to dispensation granted by the Standards Committee in June 2022 in relation to members' disclosable pecuniary interests, due to their interest in land, members will be permitted to debate and vote on the business to be transacted. And I'm advised that councillor Mrs. Wittem has the benefit of a dispensation granted by the Standards Committee on the 20th of March 2023, due to her employment as a parish clerk, and she is permitted to debate and vote on the business to be transacted. Item three, minutes of the last ordinary meeting of council on the 30th of January 2025. Are members happy that I signed the minutes as a correct record? Thank you, councillor. councillor Javid. Thank you. Item four, questions from members of the public. This item has been withdrawn from the agenda as the subject matter pertaining to the question which had been submitted is being investigated by the regional Labour Party. Could I now bring in Mrs. Palmer to the monitoring officer? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to further clarify on that, it was yesterday that council officers received official confirmation that the subject matter was under investigation, and clearly it would be inappropriate today to listen to the question that was being proposed, as that would prejudice the investigation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Palmer. Item five, questions of Cabinet members, chairs of committees, and representatives on outside bodies. Have we got anybody? councillor Thompson, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question is to the leader, councillor Matthew Brown. Matthew, it's, this is sort of an ongoing thing. The Standards Committee seems to be a bit of a waste of time, and would you agree with me that we are wasting our time having a Standards Committee and a Code of Conduct, because they're really not worth the paper they're written on? And whenever sanctions are given to somebody, it's quite easily for councillors to ignore it. I know there's a consultation just gone in recently, so hopefully something will be done about it, but would you agree with me at the moment, it's toothless and not worth the paper it's written on?
Thank you very much. I think what we have to do is work within the current legislation we have, and I do have faith in our Standards Committee Chair, which is councillor Atkins, and also the Monarch Office and others, that we will actually deal with complaints as fairly and robustly as we can under the current legislation. Thank you.
Do you have a supplementary councillor? Thank you. councillor Hall, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question is to the leader of the council, and then with regards to developments in town that are very heartening. The whole city spirits were lifted by our own freeman of the city, Nick Park, who came recently to open the Animates 45 million developments, which has been received with such excitement and glee. But animators are just one aspect of Labour's ambitious programme for the city regeneration, though, and I think we should celebrate all of them. He, as leader, informed of the number of jobs created through council-led city regeneration. Preston is very much a boomtown at the moment, and all members surely should celebrate and shout for the rooftops how progressive the city is at the moment. There are so many different things going on compared to comparable cities, not just nearby, but throughout the country.
Councillor Hall, thank you very much for the question. I mean, you are completely correct that animate is just one aspect of our city centre regeneration strategy. The entirety of the strategy is over £110 million. This is unprecedented in terms of council investment. You've got to go back to the 60s and beyond when we're investing this much. So I've actually got a number of the jobs that we've created and supported, and will do through animate, the Harris refurbishment, the youth zone, a mountainous house, improvements in public infrastructure, and the levelled up fund, including the replacement of the old tram bridge. And it's close to 650 jobs we've either created or will support through public procurement. And we contrast that through the days we were holding the hands of corporate developers for over a decade, and not one single brick was built. It's a huge achievement for this council to be creating that level of employment and wealth in our communities. Thank you very much for the question, councillor.
Do you have a supplementary councillor, Hall? councillor Jewell, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question is to the leader of the council. So in relation to the public question that was supposed to be posed, I don't want to get into the subject matter of that actual question, but what I do want to get into is the precedent for this being withdrawn. My understanding is that within our constitution, when I just remind myself, within our constitution, it says that this may be, a question may be rejected if it's not around a matter concerning the council. I would propose, suggest that this does, that it's defamatory, frivolous, or offensive. My understanding is that there is evidence of what is claimed in here, and as such is not defamatory. It's substantially the same as a question asked before. I'm not aware this question has been asked before, and requires disclosure of confidential or exempt information. I am not aware that this is confidential or exempt. So could the leader clarify for me, under which part of our constitution was this withdrawn? Because I think it sends a really dangerous sentiment that members of the public cannot ask a question of this council, and in this particular case, given that it may or may not have been critical of Labour, that it just comes across as Labour avoiding scrutiny. So clarification around that would be really appreciated.
Thank you, councillor Jewell. Obviously, the decision to not take the question has been taken on advice that's been received, leading from our senior officers. I'm not going to comment any further on this because there's an internal matter that's been taken forward by the regional Labour Party, and I'm not allowed to comment any further. But what I will say is that the party will take all allegations of antisemitism and discrimination very seriously. Thank you very much.
Just a minute, councillor Jewell. I'd like to bring the chief exec in, please. We've already made a statement on this, and it's not to be discussed here because it's been investigated. Mr. Phillips?
Just for clarity and for the chamber, Mr. Mayor, the decision was made by myself and the monitoring officer on the basis of evidence that was provided to us. So it was not a decision for a member, and in particular not the leader of the council's decision, it was an officer's decision. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
As far as I understand at this moment in time, it's irrelevant, your question.
Mr. Mayor, my question is simply, I have said in my posing of the question, I'm not getting into the subject matter of the question.
No, you actually want to about the constitution.
Which part of the constitution was this withdrawn under? This isn't about internal Labour investigations, this is about the affairs of this council. So under which part of the constitution was this question withdrawn? That's my question, Mr. Mayor.
I think I will have to answer that. I don't know if you want to come in, Karen. Myself, with the Monarch Office, believe that we had the authority within the relevant parts of the constitution to withdraw that question at that time. We have been in correspondence with the questioner and offered a discussion with that individual, and that would remain confidential until any future question would arise. So I don't think there's anything further we can add at this point. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Once the investigation has been completed, Mrs. Billman can obviously ask a further question.
We're moving on now to the other questions to Cabinet members. councillor Dwyer, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to ask the Cabinet Member for Communities and Social Justice for an update on progress on the agreed friendship twinning arrangement between Preston and the town or city in Palestine in recognition of the need for solidarity between our communities in these times. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Dwyer, for that question. Yes, as you all may be aware, that we've been having some discussions with the Friendship for Palestine organisation, national organisation, to look at a possible town or city that we could twin or form a friendship with. And having worked with them, we had about two suggestions of particular towns that had come forward, looking at whether there was any commonality, looking at the size of those. And what we found was that they were not suitable due to the size and due to the location and to due to political activism within those particular towns. So having had just, some weeks ago, the Archbishop of Derby was part of this meeting from Friends of Palestine with our chief executive, and they came up with the town of Hebron. Hebron has a mixed diaspora. It has 700 Jewish settlers. It is the third largest metropole in Palestine, next to Gaza and Jerusalem, as a population, a mixed population, as said, of Jewish settlers, of Muslims and Christians. It's rich in cultural diversity, and there is lots of commonalities with our city of Preston. The Derby City is also, has formed, has twinned with this Hebron itself, and we are having further discussions with them to look at how we proceed with this. As this request came from the Muslim community in Preston, in particular through the mosques, where large congregations of our Muslim community attend, we went back to them and shared with them, I have shared with them personally myself, that this is the city that has been identified, and what were their views on it. And they were very happy and satisfied with this, for us to proceed with this. So currently, the situation is that we are going to be having a meeting with Derby City Council, with the Archbishop, who recently has visited Hebron, and has met the mayor of Hebron as well. So we will be having, as I said, looking at further how we progress with this and what we need to do. So at the moment, yes, Hebron is the city that has been chosen, and that is where we're forming the friendship and starting making those arrangements. Thank you. I hope that answers your question, councillor Dwyer.
Have you a supplementary councillor, Dwyer?
I just wanted to thank the leader and the work of the officers of getting this to this stage right now, and I look forward to further updates.
councillor Saxena, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question is also to councillor Khan. I wonder if councillor Khan can give us an update on where we are with the new homeless facility in the centre of Preston? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Saxena. I'm sure you're referring to the night shelter. I personally actually visited the night shelter earlier on this week, and I must say, it's really made a lot of progress. The renovations are nearly complete. Downstairs, we have two disabled rooms, and then went upstairs and had a look at the 12 cubicles, individual cubicles. There's painting that yet to be done in the property, and there's other bits of maintenance work, but on the whole, the heating and the electrical systems and that, and the security systems are all in. So hopefully, we're looking at the end of March, which I know is just a couple of weeks away, but it may fall into the first of April, all being well. Just in the interim, I know there has been a weather forecast out there that we may have another severe weather next week, so arrangements have been made. Just as usual, we do this, and it's called SWAP, so we have severe weather emergency provision. So those individuals that are sleeping rough and require somewhere, and if the shelter is not ready by next week, which I don't think it will be, because I said it will be the end of March, then they will be accommodated appropriately. Yeah. So hopefully, as I said, end of March, first week in April, and I'm really looking forward to seeing the opening of this. Yeah, thank you.
Do you have a supplementary councillor, Saxena? councillor Thompson, do you want to come in on?
I did, I just wanted to come in on the friendship agreement with a place in Palestine. I was wondering, when we did vote on that, we did say that we would be looking at a town in Israel as well, for sort of parity. Do we have any progress on that? Thank you.
councillor Thompson, if you recall, I did say in these chambers that we would first be dealing with and accommodating the first request that came through, and then we would be moving on to looking at a town, forming a friendship or twinning with a town in Israel. And likewise, we'd be going out to our Jewish community and our Jewish member that sits on the faith covenant to look at an organisation like the Palestinian organisation, to find a similar organisation that would help us to identify a town or city. So that will come. Yeah, okay. Thank you.
councillor Kelly, you have a question, please?
Response for Freddie, councillor Freddie Bailey, call him a nice name. Freddie, I just had the privilege of walking a friend around Avon and Miller Park. Now, I walk it every day, as you know, and I appreciate it, but it was so good for them to walk around and say, God, you guys are so lucky that you had this park. Whilst we're there, we were engaging with the officers and the gardeners that were there, and they were just perfect examples of just showing, you know, the best of Preston. So would you agree, we have some incredible officers who do amazing work in our inner gardens, and thank you for the work on Taylor Street and Meadow Street play area, which hasn't been dealt with for years. I'm sure that local residents, excluding me, will enjoy that.
Yeah, obviously, all of our staff within the naval services, parks departments, you know, do a really fantastic job, you know, particularly with minimising resources over, you know, the past 15 years. And obviously, they do a fantastic job, particularly in Avon and Miller Park, which obviously are fantastic, you know, Victorian parks, right in the city centre. Obviously, we do think that we can make some improvements to those, and obviously, I know they're not going to be part of the level and up fund, you know, that we're spending on, say, Moore Park and obviously Waverley Park as well. But in terms of Miller Park and Avon Park, I know there's some sort of some iron proves you want to make, make it even more attractive, particularly around the pavilion, Park Cafe Two, which will hopefully not just enhance the actual park, but maybe more visitors will come to Avon and Miller Park as well, so we can actually showcase that. Obviously, you know, Eggroll and Day, which I'm guessing is coming up in Easter, we just highlight how great Avon and Miller Park are, and obviously, we will to make it more attractive to other people to attend that as well. But yeah, in terms of the, our staff, they obviously do a fantastic job right across the city on all of our parks and green spaces.
Do you have a supplementary?
One thing to say, an American visitor described it as Narnia by French wood, you know, where the wood carvings are. So that it was like Narnia, because you're going into this sort of space, which is, if you've not been there, you should go, really.
Yeah, I was going to say, I've never been to Narnia, so can't, can't comment on that, but yeah.
I'll take you to Narnia.
councillor Derby, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's also related to twinning and friendship, as it happens. It's just over three years since Russia launched the full sail invasion of Ukraine, as we know, and it's arguably the most difficult time for many Ukrainians, particularly the Ukrainian community in the UK, since that invasion started three years ago, considering what's been happening on the international community over the last month or so. I went down to the vigil on the flag market along with councillor Jewell a couple of weeks ago to remember those who have been lost. Councillors may remember, in 2022, we passed a motion in this council chamber declaring a friendship with the city of Kamnats Podolsky in Ukraine. My question is to councillor Khan, asking whether we have had any communication with Kamnats Podolsky, either from them to us or from us to them, or if there's been any other attempts to cement that friendship since then, to build on the joint communities that we have.
Firstly, I'd just like-
Excuse me, councillor, just a second. I just want to, councillor Derby, November, we celebrated 35 years of twinning with Kalish, and me and the chief exec went out to Kalish for a couple of days, and, and the town from Kamnats Podolsky, they were also celebrating 35 years with Kalish, and they were there. Say a few words?
So we had a dialogue.
Yeah, we had a conversation, and they thanked us for the support that Preston had given them. Okay. And they had an ongoing dialogue, and it's, we cut a cake together while we were there.
Yeah, well, I think, Mr. Mayor, I think you've answered it for me, because I'd just like to say, councillor Derby, that we've not gone into any direct friendship discussion that I'm aware of, but obviously, we've already twinned with particular Kalish and others. But through the Lancashire Refugee Integration Team, we work very closely with Ukraine settlers, and we do have caseworkers, and they actually advise and guide us on, you know, particular issues that are, you know, prevalent at this moment in time. So I can't comment on it, but I can look into it definitely, and I'll see who's been responsible for this. And I, to be honest with you, I can't recall going back, when you said in 2022, maybe my- maybe my memory is not as good as it used to be. And I'll have to go through my documents. Okay.
Just to clarify that, we gave them a certificate, but we didn't intend to enter into a formal relationship with them. It's like it wasn't a motion that was agreed at council, you see. It wasn't a motion that was agreed at council. So we can give you the information later, what it actually was, the link with the Ukrainian town. All right. Is this councillor little about? Have you got a supplementary councillor Derby?
No, I don't think so. I'll look forward to the further information you've sent through. But thank you very much for the information. I look forward to hearing further from councillor Khan. But thank you.
A little, do you have a question for a member of the cabinet on something else?
Yes.
Okay.
Just a quick one really for councillor Khan. I want to thank for the work with the Friends of Palestine. It's good to hear that we are progressing forward. It was just a quick note, you were talking about the town of Hebron. I hope I've said that right. It was just a quick, it sounds like that decision has been made that that is the town or city that we are going with. When's that being brought back to council for us to vote on? Or is that already happening? Sorry, it was just a quick one.
Hopefully, it will be the next council meeting, hopefully. Yeah. We've still got to have a further discussion with the city of Derby and the Archdeacon, as I mentioned. You know, who's actually chair of some organised thing that's pursuing this. Yeah.
That okay, councillor? That completes members' questions to cabinet members and chairs of committees. So we'll move on to item six, the main part of the day. Financial strategy and budget proposals 2025-2026. In order for us to set a legal budget today, we have to understand that any we have to understand the effect any proposed amendments may have on the budget. On your seats, you should have a cabinet resolution on white paper, a Liberal Democrat resolution and amendment on yellow paper, and a Conservative resolution and amendment on blue paper. You will also find on your seats details of a response to the budget consultation exercise for information. If any further amendments are moved during debate on the budget item, the section 151 officer will have to do the necessary calculations. Please be patient and bear with the officers if this is the case. I am proposing to waive council procedure rule 14.4 to allow movers and secunders of budget motions to speak for a bit longer, sorry, for longer than the normal six minutes. Is this seconded? Thank you councillor Rickwell. Are we all in agreement? Thank you. Anybody not? Please note that when we come to vote on the substantive motion, when all amendments have been voted on, a recorded vote is required under the Local Authorities Standing Orders Regulations 2001, as this is a budget meeting. I must just the meeting in Pendle went on until 25 past one in the morning, so I don't think we're going to be here that long. Councillor Rollins, will you be moving the report? And the council tax resolution, which is on your seat on the white paper?
Thank you. The final local government settlement provided an increase in core spending power of 5.8%, including the insurance compensation grants, with Preston receiving what is believed to be the highest increase in core spending power of all district councils. A proposed net revenue budget of 25.5 million for 2526, with a contribution to general fund reserves of 469,000. The general fund reserve is forecast to be 15.4 million at the end of 2526 and 10.8 million at the end of 2829, over nine times higher than the minimum required balance of 1.1 million. That's that's an odd position for us to be in. Obviously, we've been running balances down in the forecast. We've never, we've never actually run the balances down. But that's the strategy that we've had to avoid making cuts for many years. We're now in a position where we have higher balances, being told we really need to keep them by auditors and being told that we should take more risk by the peer review. So we are in a strange position, but there we are. There is over a million of revenue growth items in 2526. It totals over 3 million over the life of this forecast. It's quite possible we might never see the end of this forecast as a council, of course. A proposed council tax increase of 2.99%, taking the van de amount for unparished areas of Preston to 364 pounds and 45 pence. An increase of 10 pounds 58 per year. If you look up the road, their increase is likely to be 10 pounds a month, at least for most people. Ours is 10 pounds a year. This, along with an additional 1,532 properties added to the tax base, helping us to generate a total of 16.1 million in council tax for Preston. Proposed capital growth items totaling 7.6 million, resulting in a capital programme for 2526 of 45.8 million and 95.8 million over the five years. The animate leisure scheme was delivered on budget. An average return on our treasury investments of 4.63% with an expected return of 2.2 million for 2425. This, along with the new city deal agreement, have contributed to us being able to delay long term borrowing, saving 1 million pound of interest cost involved 2425 and 2526. The bank rate has reduced to 4.5% in February, with further reductions forecast to reduce the rate to 3.75%. At the 31st of March 2025, the council is forecast to have external debt of 12 million and investments of 30 million. Investments are expected to reduce to 13 million during 2526 as investments are redeemed and the cash is used to fund capital expenditure, which will mean new external borrowing may not be required. To build a 45 million pound scheme for this council and not have to borrow outside this council is is an incredible position to be in. Fund repayments of the minimum revenue provision are increasing due to the capital expenditure being incurred and I budgeted to be 1.5 million in 2526. That's that's the official spiel that I was given. So I thought I'd read it. It was very good. But we do have a new format for the budget report, as I'm sure you realised. And we're going to have a corporate plan coming forward, which will include a lot of the stuff that would have been in the old budget report, the achieving Preston's priorities, which served as well. But it's time to, it's time to move on. And this report is much more financial in nature. The finance team have done an incredible job putting this together, along with all the other things this council is doing. They were integral to negotiating the extension to city deal, which has changed our forecast completely. We've got the cash for anime, we've got the cash for Harris, we've got extra cash from the new homes bonus dropping in to the balances. We put us in a much healthier position. Also got the house building, of course. But that that renegotiation of city deal was an incredible achievement by this council and especially the finance team and the treasurer, treasurer director of resources, section 151 officer, she's got more titles than Nick Park, but she deserves an awful lot of credit for that. As Matthew said earlier during questions, there's a huge programme of works in the city centre. I got it to 75 million now, I think Matthew said 120. So it's at least 75. It's at least, it's a lot of money. If you add the levelling up fund money for parks to the new capital proposed for parks in our budget, which includes a new returning back to having a capital pot for parks, which was stopped many years ago due to the cuts, plus some other schemes that are in the capital programme, you're looking at well over 15 million pounds that will be spent on parks and open spaces, play areas across the city in the next few years. Or the inflation council tax rise, which raises about 450,000, maybe 500. Revenue proposals alone do include 1 million pounds new spending for next year. I noticed today that Elon Musk had been talking about empathy, that it was possibly the downfall of humankind, which is not, I'm probably not the most empathetic person you've ever looked at, but I'm not sure I'd want to live in that world at all. And it's bizarre that we're in this position where we're being ruled by billionaires. I do think that our budget proposals are driven by empathy. We have councillors, many of whom work, not just, not just through the council work, through other roles, who work on the frontline and who deal with people who are suffering. And a lot of this budget proposal is around that. We're creating jobs, I'm not going to go through them all, we're creating jobs to kind of backfill and increase the council capacity to deliver all the things we're delivering, along with the new stuff, of course. One of those jobs is a health officer. We're doing more on health than we've ever done before. Now that we've got a cabinet member for health and it's councillor Coopland in that role, who is very experienced in that role, we're going to have a health officer and we've got new jobs looking at housing issue, possibly a private sector licensing scheme, an extra housing standards officer, an extra officer to deliver the insulation, the government insulation money, which obviously improves housing in the city. An extra officer to pay out the disabled facilities grants, because we never get through those. Or seems to be more money than we can pay out. And these are obviously important aspects for people's lives. So lots of jobs, there are lots of activity on health, on the environment, we're putting money back into street cleaning enforcement, which everybody wants, you know. White tip in and litter and dog fowling. And we really need to do more on that. And we're going to do that. Also on environment, we're going to increase CCTV, improving community safety. There's also another project on women's, especially for women's safety in the night time economy, who are vulnerable to spiking of drinks and assaults on all sorts of levels and much worse, of course. So that's really pleasing to see. We're also going to put some money back into the role of mayor. With local government reorganisation coming, we want to make a statement that the 800 year old office of the mayor of Preston must not disappear. It's too important to the people of Preston, certainly to us here. And by putting that money back in the budget, it would mean that a new council will have to take a decision not to do that. And that, I think that would be very unpopular. So we're hoping to protect that and enhance that. We're going to recreate the Guild Committee very soon. Brought that forward, that's later on the agenda. Again, there are things that we can do on the Guild, even seven years ahead. We can make a start on certain things, but we want to make a statement that Preston Guild must go ahead. Ideally, it's bigger and better than ever before. I think that's what we all want to see, but we want to respect the traditions and carry that on. Again, that's 800 years of traditions. We've already put the funding in the budget in previous years. It has a snowball effect. We should have about 5 million. By the time we get to the Guild, we'll need more than that if we want, you know, the last one costs 5 million. So but there's lots more work to do on that. Arts and culture, as much as, you know, housing and health is obviously important. Arts and culture is really important to this city. We're putting money into the Preston Weekender, which is an evolving event. And it's a great event and it booked some fantastic artists for this one. Really pleased to support that. And we've put a new 50k a year for two years into arts and culture. It's up to the team to decide what to do with that. There was a report recently that Preston was very low on arts council funding. What we do get is mostly won by this council, not only, but mostly. But there's not a lot of grants around for local artists to bid on. So hopefully, we can remedy that. And that is our budget. I think, I think it's a fantastic budget. And as I said, it's driven by by what people need, by what our councillors can see that they need, that they see every day. The all ideas brought forward by these members here and I hope they stand up and talk about their bits and own it, because it's going to make a huge difference to Preston, even if we're only here for another couple of years. So I'm happy to move 2.1 and 2.2, the items in there on this report. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Rollinson. Have we got a seconder? Do you wish to speak now?
I'll reserve my right to speak, Mr. Mayor, because my understanding is we take the opposition
Amendments.
After this. And I'll speak afterwards. Thank you.
Does anybody else want to speak on this motion? On the substantive? Councillor Wise, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to obviously thank Martin for that speech and for the budget that he's presented to the council. I particularly wanted to pick up on the women's safety and the CCTV aspect, because on Saturday, we've got International Women's Day. And on Monday, councillor Khan organised the International Women's Day event, which was really, really good. We heard a lot of inspiring speeches. And the theme of International Women's Day this year is accelerate action. But you know, you can't accelerate action in terms of women's role in society if women are still at risk of harm. And so that's why I think the fact that we're going to be putting more CCTV into the city centre is really, really important, because the fact is that women are afraid walking alone at night. And so this is only a small step, but it's a really valuable one. And actually, we're still way behind some other areas in Lancashire in terms of the number of cameras that we have in the city centre. So but this is, as I say, a step in the right direction. And also the fact that we're going to contribute 40,000 towards the Red Umbrella Project. Because as I say, we can't accelerate action on the, on economic matters, on educational matters, and all the things that women are really concerned about. And obviously, men also need to be concerned about in supporting women without actually ensuring that we're safe. So I just want to commend that particular part of this, this budget, particularly in the light of what we're celebrating on Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Wise. Councillor Brown, you can only come in as a seconder at the end or now.
And it's best for you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, don't you want to go through the amendments, the amendments first?
I'm a little confused, because I thought we were going straight to the opposition amendments, but then you brought in councillor Wise from our side to speak on the budget, so.
Well, I just wondered if anybody else wanted to comment on this report who hasn't seconded it.
Okay, I'll come in at the end then. Thank you.
I've got another councillor who wishes to comment. Councillor Hendall, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make it very brief. Thank you, Martin, for your report. Again, I've just wanted to talk about the Red Umbrella Initiative. I understand that it will secure an advocacy worker to work alongside the Foxton Women's Centre and our police. and our police, to help and protect the most vulnerable women in our society. And I've been assured that this funding will change lives. So obviously, if we do that, that's absolutely fantastic, isn't it? And regarding art and culture, again, we welcome the extra funding. And we will be working with officers to determine the best way to deploy these funds to make a real impact. I'm keen to support the development of independent creative organisations in the city, to level up the cultural infrastructure and to help realise our collective ambition and champion the fantastic innovation and talent that already exists in Preston, thank you.
Thank you councillor Hindle, councillor Dwyer.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. And just firstly, thank you to Martin and to the officers who've worked very hard on presenting this budget proposal. Ultimately, local government is the politics of place. And so it's to be praised that this is a budget that is in line with the priorities of the people of Preston. And that is clear in the investments that are proposed within it. We presented a budget that invests in our infrastructure services and tackling injustice, even in the context of still the fallout of fourteen years of central government cuts to local government. I want to take the opportunity to highlight two key enforcement investments, which may otherwise go somewhat unnoticed. The first one is in tackling waste and fly tipping, and the other is in tackling empty property enforcement. Now, fly tipping and waste enforcement issues apply in communities across the city. Colleagues across from all parties will know this. We've seen it in Shara Green, all three parties in the persistent tipping in the Brook in Shara Green. But there's also multiple hotspots around Hartiston Road, Broadgate and Avonham too. Our offices are working really hard on enhanced enforcement in these areas when it's reported, but we do need that further capacity for clearance and also investigation prevention and community outreach. And this budget proposes a combined one hundred and forty thousand pound investment per year in exactly that, which is a critical step to improving pride in communities, tackling crime and improving public health. Meanwhile, the budget also proposes a sixty two thousand pound annual investment in enforcement for empty properties and homes, which is a crucial step in tackling rogue landowners across the city, securing empty properties, bringing empty homes back into use, such as those we find in Fullwood, and also crucially, preserving heritage assets in Preston. Now, I'm proud to be a part of the council that's listening to the most pressing concerns Preston residents at the moment, in particular in preserving our heritage. And I'm pleased that this budget proposal has found a sensible funded solution within our powers to act. So I commend this budget proposal.
Thank you councillor Dwyers, anyone else would like to speak on this, no? In that case, the Liberal will move to part two, which is the Liberal Democrats' amendment to the Cabinet Budget Proposal and the Council Tax Resolution, which are on the yellow sheets. Councillor Rutter, will you be moving this?
I will, Mr Mayor, thank you. So let me thank, by echoing what Mr Deputy Leader has said, thanking officers Jackie and Lee and the team for working very hard. And thank you, sir, for your hard work on this. I can picture him late at night pondering the great philosophical questions while he's strumming his ukulele. That's not a euphemism. The big questions.
But get on with the amendment councillor.
There are only a couple, Mr Mayor, it'll be short.
It's my show, just get on with it.
Yeah, and the questions he'll be asking himself, you know, does your chewing gum lose its flavour on the bedpost overnight? And how hard can it be to run a cafe in a park? So we are going to bring out the greatest hits, more on that and the Bank of Bailey later on. Aside from the bank and the cafe, this document only really brings in some modest amendments. Not going to comment on the other areas of the budget in the interests of empathy. But may I politely suggest for the Labour Group, if there are any of these that you like, before you are whipped into voting them down, write them down, that way you can bring them next year and pretend they're yours. And these guys sort of already have. So there are five small items, I'll try and stick to a minute each, Mr Mayor. Firstly, the Guild Hall has been the subject of a great deal of discussion over recent years. And I know there's been a great deal of work. We're putting forward a specific item that some work be done to investigate the options. We're aware that surveys are in hand to evaluate the rack concrete, but we've proposed a lump of money for an options review to look at, should we carry on as friendly using part of the facility? Should there be an expensive refurbishment or is it possible to demolish it? So that's the first item, really. And that options review would then give information for the council to evaluate the pros and cons of those various options, perhaps through a cross party group. So there's an amount of one hundred and fifty thousand pounds for that. And for clarity, we're not in conflict with the Labour Group. We're just suggesting that we accelerate the investigative work so that we can all be better informed. That leads to a broader question about heritage. We're all proud of the city's legacy and history. We've proposed a building, heritage building officer. There is currently a resource through Growth Lancashire. We're simply proposing an addition to that resource to fund a full time position or additional person and a small fund for them to spend on things like history trails. In a similar vein, we're proposing a small amount for installing blue plaques and identifying some of our great heritage. The next two items, environmental, and I think we'll find quite a bit of support from around the whole council. We think more can be done, I was interested, Mr Deputy Leader, that the fifteen million total investment in parks was suggesting yet more. Yes, we're pleased to see the investment in Moor Park and Waverley Park. There's been great success through England Tantister Neighbourhood Council is progressing a scheme for Ingle Dip that will involve a huge amount of additional playpark equipment. I won't mention Ashton Park. It was pleasing yesterday to see Shirley Parkinson has secured some shared prosperity funding for painting play equipment. We're going a lot further, we're suggesting let's spend two hundred and fifty thousand pounds a year, which is shown, the capital cost of that is shown, for parks across the city. Big parks and small parks in the rural areas and the city centre. We've also proposed a small fund for extra trees, particularly, and there are other funds elsewhere, linear parks and developments, but an extra ten thousand pounds for replacing trees that have been damaged. That's just a modest ten thousand pounds a year. So that leaves me, the two old chestnuts, the bank and first of all, Avonham Park Pavilion Cafe. Councillor Kelly, yes, it's a privilege to have such a park. And I've walked, run, cycled past that cafe dozens of times on a Sunday evening, summer time, Saturday morning for park run, and the cafe's closed. What we do know, it's difficult to comment on the offering because it never seems to be open. The city is still managing to run the cafe at a loss of seventy five thousand pounds a year of taxpayers' money. I had groups of international students at UCLAN who could have written a business plan as a project. And we're aware that officers are working hard at efficiencies, but we go further. So we propose a review, perhaps with external consultants or the university, to consider options to rent out or find a partner to look at ways of making that at least cost neutral. It's a very small amount of money to make that investigation. And finally, not long now, Mr Mayor, the bank. It seems like only the last council meeting that we had to point out to councillor Bailey that his story was fiction. It literally has a guardian angel in it. Seems to be the whole idea dreamt up by Mr Ukulele, his working class origins. Apparently, his old man was a dustman, he wore a dustman's hat. There is a line in that song, some people make a fortune, others make a mint. So let's delve into what's happening with that. There is a business plan, I'd have given some of my students a pretty good grade for it, at least for presentation. But what's missing is any commitment at all to employing people in Preston, any commitment to occupying buildings in Preston, and any meaningful mechanism by which the city ever gets back any of its money. Even if the bank does succeed, the earliest date by which there might be any dividend will be after this council ceases to exist. It's a million pounds of taxpayers' money in the dustbin. If the deputy leader believes that this ill advised speculative gamble offers any social value, we only need to look at high street banks closing hundreds of branches and the fact that Preston is the only council prepared to throw away its cash in this way. This proposal is quite different to animate the Harris, the Trambridge, even the plans to invest in affordable housing. We're not in principle against those aspects of the Preston model when tangible assets are built in the city. And we've put our hands up frequently to support those projects. What we are against is a high risk speculative gamble that falls far outside the remit of a city council. So we removed in this budget all investment in that gamble and transferred it to environmental and heritage investments. On that, I'll move this amendment, thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor, have we got a second here for the amendment, please?
We do, Mr Mayor.
Do you wish to speak now?
I was literally just going to say I reserve my right to speak to the end.
Any comments on the amendment, please? Councillor Jewell, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I noticed today that President City Council posted a Facebook post, really good Facebook post, about maintenance of our parks. And I also noticed that areas such as Summer Trees and Haslem Park are on there being having some maintenance upgrades, absolutely fantastic. It is though, with some incredulity, that I don't see anything about Ashton Park. And in this Liberal Democrat budget, rather than risk a million pound of taxpayers' money in a bank, a regional bank, the principle of which we don't disagree with, we just don't think it's the position of this council to put taxpayers' money at risk in that way. With that money, we can do everything, all the good stuff that's in the Labour budget, such as with CCTVs, additional personnel. I've heard many good things that are in the Labour budget. But we would take that bank money and we would invest it in multiple things. And the largest part of that is in our parks and play areas. Can you just imagine, Mr Mayor, the investment in Ashton Park that we could make with that fund within the Liberal Democrat budget? So, Mr Mayor, I urge members of this council to support the Liberal Democrat amendment because it gives the people of Preston exactly what they're screaming out for, thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Jewell, councillor Wise, you wish to speak about this amendment?
Not surprisingly, I'm going to oppose this amendment. Last year, you attacked the policy officer, that was what you wanted to remove from community wealth building last year. Actually, thank goodness, yeah, we defeated that because the policy officer has made such a huge difference in terms of Preston becoming a real living wage city. So this year, it's the bank. Well, I just think it's, you just can't, it's interesting, actually, you say you don't oppose it in principle, you just don't want us using our money. Well, actually, we believe in putting our money where our mouth is. And we actually think this is really, really important from a Preston perspective to have the bank. I'm not going to go through everything that I said in January, but just to say, there will be people employed in Preston, because they've actually said the first branch is going to open here in Preston. The head office is going to be situated here in Preston. So that's absolute nonsense, what you're saying. You're saying about the building, we're actually looking to see if we can find a suitable building for their head office. So that's something that we want to, you know, help them with, facilitate if we possibly can. The leader, the chief executive, the director of resources and myself recently met with the chief executive of the bank. And we will be having regular meetings, being appraised of progress. And let me tell you, yeah, we've agreed the two hundred and fifty thousand. Of due course, we will be coming back for the other one hundred and seventy, seven hundred and fifty thousand into that initial three million that is required to get the initial licence with restrictions. Progress is being made upon that. The leader of the council particularly written to various local authorities, introducing the chief executive. And I know meetings are going to be taking place with different local authorities to try and encourage them to put their money in. Also, as I think I said last time, the bank's employing the services of a financial consultant, seeking support, financial support from a range of organisations, such as institutional clients and people with high net worth individuals who've got an interest in the North West. So I think, you know, as I say, you say you're not against it in principle, because I said last time, this isn't a radical proposal, you just have to look at what they do in Germany and other places. The fact is, they're already using an IT system that other banks in other parts of the world use, so that's not a risk. So I just think we need to be putting our money where our mouth is and actually support this. In terms of the heritage officer, because obviously I'm really interested in preserving our heritage buildings, I don't think this is the best way of doing it. We're already, just this week, had a meeting with a solicitors firm, looking at the legal things that we can be doing to actually enforce owners of our heritage buildings to actually be making sure that they are putting them into the correct, you know, upgrading them, stopping them degrading and whatever and whatever. And that's the best way to be spending our money on practical things, because we need expert advice to be able to ensure that we can take whatever is appropriate action in enforcing landlords who aren't, owners who aren't taking the appropriate action to do that. So again, I don't think that's a good way to spend our money, thank you.
Thank you councillor Wise, councillor Darby, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm really proud of this budget because I'm really proud of our city. And more importantly, I'm proud of the history of our city. Just in front of us all today, we've had this handed to us. The Preston Historical Society does an excellent job. And they're helped by the fact that we have such an amazing history in this city, of which, Mr Mayor, you are a proud custodian of a fair part of it. We've already talked earlier today about the fact that we've had a mayor in this city for well over eight hundred years. And I welcome the fact that we are putting some funding into that, particularly in light of the fact that you're looking to make sure that that position is going to be safe as we go into potentially a new authority going forward. I absolutely welcome that. But we've got so much more history around the city that we want to be looking after, from the better part of a thousand years, much of which Preston has been the primary location here in Lancashire and in the North West, far longer than even Manchester or Liverpool have been as important as they are today. And you talk councillor Wise about putting your money where our mouth is. Well, this is exactly what we're doing here. We think it's really important that we look after the history of our city, that we try and preserve it for future generations and try and make sure that the younger generation, when they are coming through, know more about our city. Make them proud of the place that they are a part of, and that is what we are doing. I'm having all sorts of flashbacks from what you were saying before, continuing this sales pitch about the bank. And I understand that there is the best will behind it going forwards, that we want to have the headquarters in the city, we want to have it benefiting people in Preston. But ultimately, the bottom line, when it comes down to it, is that you cannot guarantee any of that, because it is outside the control of this council. I understand intention is right, but if you can't guarantee it, is it really worth a million pounds of taxpayers' money from this city going towards that? And that is why we've taken it out. And instead of putting that money into the bank, we want to put that money into the parks, which not incidentally is a large and important part of Preston's history as well. We've got these fantastic parks, we've already talked about how important they are. We want to make sure. We want to make sure that they are there for future generations and they look their absolute best so that when we're showing our guests around from America or anywhere else, that we can be really proud of our city. Too much has been allowed to slip over recent years. And that's not down to the fault necessarily of anyone in this building, but we've got to try and make sure that we build it back up again and make Preston a city that we're proud of. And that is exactly what our budget will do. And I would encourage all councils to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Darby. Councillor Bailey, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's just to pick up on some points. One of the things I want just to mention, obviously, we've put in our budget £250,000 for parks in terms of the play strategy. Now, what we think this is, is in a way the bottom line. So even though you proposed more money for that, we are still ambitious with that. However, what we are proposing in terms of that doesn't mean that we're not going to hopefully expand that budget further. So why I always put in obviously the £250,000 part of our capital programme for the next number of years, is that will obviously mean we can still access money through other external resources, you know, through external funding and also parish councils as well. So just because ours is £250,000, we are ambitious that we want to extend that further. And then, again, just to mention about the Avon Park Pavilion Cafe. I mentioned at ONS, I'll be honest, I can't remember what it was, I think it was before Christmas. And obviously, the timing of that was quite relevant because at the time, we'd literally, I think, just the day beforehand, on the Thursday, whereas ONS was on the Friday, we had the consultants in just to talk about the actual Avon Park Pavilion Cafe. Now, at this moment in time, that £15,000 you're allocating, I just think that's far too soon at this moment in time. What we're doing right now is we're trying to look at the quick wins, the easy wins to try and maximise profits. There's a lot of sales that go on that cafe and making sure it's as efficient as possible. And then we'll move on to the next stage of rights. Do we need to rebrand? Do we need to change the model? What do we need to do first? That way, that £15,000, I just think it's too soon at this moment in time. But, you know, it's one of our top priorities. And, you know, we are making sure that deficit is run down and hopefully the next financial year for the Avon Park Pavilion Cafe will be much more favourable. So, yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Bailey. Councillor Kelly, please.
Just a note for councillor Rutter. The cafe is open now at 9.30 for the park run on Saturday morning. I know it doesn't look like it, but I did engage in a bit of park running myself. You get 450 people there, of which most are gagging for a drink. So because we're open at 9.30, it works really well. We have had conversations, Freddie and myself and the officers, about opening at 9.30 for the children's park run, which last week had 167 people. So we are obviously doing that. And they do really good bacon sandwiches, which I can thoroughly recommend. And obviously, it's one of the only cafes where you can take a dog in and they sell dog treats, very, very nice ones apparently.
Thank you for that contribution towards the amendment, councillor Kelly. Councillor Little, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm sure no one would be surprised what I want to talk about, but we've brought forward some fantastic proposals here for the budget. But the biggest one, as we did discuss on the last one, will be the bank. And I fundamentally disagree that we should be investing a single penny of taxpayers' money into a private-funded bank that we will have no control over. Now, I don't know if this was done from my colleagues over the other side of the chamber, but I've actually been out and asking people on their doorstep, on the schoolroom, what would they want that money spent on? They were shocked to hear that this was actually approved. A million pounds of their money is going into a bank that they may or may not get any benefit from. And my question is, even if this bank is successful and gets off the ground and we have a fantastic facility in Preston, how much benefit will our residents be getting from that bank? Furthermore, the million pound that would have been wasted on this bank investment could be spent onto our parks. Mr, sorry, councillor Bailey was just talking there about too much too soon into our parks. I don't know how many people in this chamber walk around the parks in Preston. I'm currently training for a marathon, which is fantastic, and that allows me time to go and run. We have one park which is okay under the foot, and that's Avon. Every other park, their footpaths are crumbling. They are in disrepair and they have been neglected for years. We take our children out of Preston to go play on parks because my local park is not fit for purpose. To say it's too soon to spend money on a tangible asset...
Mr. Mayor, just point of order, if that's all right.
We'll just, we'll let councillor Little finish, councillor Bailey, then we'll move on.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. To waste our money now, sorry, where was I, on the bank instead of investing that into a tangible asset for the people of Preston to enjoy and use for years to come is beyond belief for me. That's all I have to say on it. And I'd hope people over the other side of the room could maybe see that investing in the parks would be better than investing in a pipe dream that has no benefit for the people of Preston. Thank you very much.
Councillor Bailey, would you like to speak on this amendment?
Yeah, I know I've already spoken, but just to point clarity, look, I didn't want to make any political points with this, but just to pull you up on a comment, I didn't say it was too much too soon on our parks. I said it was too much too soon on specifically Avon Park Pavilion Cafe, referring to the £15,000, not on the park, just thought I'd clarify that. Again, just to point out, what I said was too much too soon on Avon Park Pavilion Cafe.
Councillor Brown, please.
Just on this amendment, obviously, the usual news of the world reporting on the bank by the Liberal Democrats. We get used to it every time, highly predictable, but obviously you're telling a bunch of fibs. The investment in the bank is an investment, it's not grant funding. So it's going to get a return for us, forecast to get a return. Councils invest everywhere. We will have money invested in banks currently. This is just shifting our investment strategy towards a new bank that will create jobs and provide a service within our community. But I wonder, in your question, you've actually asked disabled residents and older residents about their feelings about the fact that bank branches have disappeared from our communities and whether they'd actually welcome a bank they own themselves and actually have a say in. I think it would be very positive. And from the feedback I've seen on the Lancashire Evening Post website and other things, this bank proposal is very highly welcomed by the community, but also by local businesses, Mr. Mayor. So please don't lie about this. We're not wasting money on this, it's an investment. Councils invest everywhere, we're just choosing to invest in this bank as part of our investment strategy. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Brown. Councillor Ward, please.
Thank you. I'd also like to sort of encourage my members to consider the Lib Dem amendments. I think one area that's not been discussed so far has been the proposal we've got for making some progress and moving forward with the Guildhall. And we started today's meeting by highlighting the success of Animate, which I think we all agree is a massive addition to the town. I've been to Animate twice and the conversation that people around me have said each time is, wouldn't it be great if the Guildhall was also open too? Joining up that evening meal with the show afterwards. You know, I look in the budget and we've got the weekend events on there. We've got kind of a £40,000, I think it is, for other cultural events. But these are all small fry, aren't they? You know, the weekend events, as much as all doubt, be good fun for those who participate. The small events on the square outside cannot be matched with what we used to provide when we had the Guildhall up and running. So trying to get the Guildhall, you know, progress, the movement Guildhall, so Guildhall, progressed and started prior to maybe this unitary becoming to its end, or sorry, the unitary starting, I think is absolutely crucial. And it joins together so many different aspects of spending in this city at the moment. And it is the central part of that jigsaw, isn't it? You know, getting the Harris open, getting the Animate open, getting the Guildhall up and running again, all the Guildhall replaced, all the Guildhall changed. We need to make a decision on that, we need some action on it. I think if you talk to people about what do they want, you know, talk about banks and whatever else, well, you know, as an old saying, you're more likely to get divorced and change your bank, I think they used to say, don't they? How many people actually change their bank to the Preston Bank once it's up and running? Who knows? How many will go to the Guildhall if it was open? I can guarantee an awful lot, thousands of people across our local area on a fairly regular basis. So I would encourage people to think about the proposal put forward and the very good suggestions made by the Liberal Democrats, joining up together so many aspects of our city plan to make Preston work for all its people. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Ward. Sorry, councillor Duke.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I just want to bring us back to something we discussed at the last council meeting. Having a Preston bank in the centre of Preston is just another branch of another bank where there's already banks and building societies already. It's got nothing to do with disability whatsoever. If you really care about disability, we need to be getting banking hubs out in our communities so that everybody has the access to get access to the bank locally without having to pay three quid to get into the bus to do it.
Thank you, councillor Duke. Anybody else? Would you like to come back, councillor Potter? Sorry, you're second in the amendment.
I am. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm also just checking, Mr. Mayor, that it's normally customary for us to have named votes on all budget amendments as well. That is what we, that is a standard practice we have normally done. If you are inclined not to do that, I will be, and our group will be calling for a named vote on our amendment. So just a pre-warning then that we normally do do named votes, sorry.
We'll check it.
Okay, well, either way, okay. Thank you very much. So I will first start by thanking officers who have spent time with our, my Lib Dem colleagues and councillor Rutter, putting together this proposal, particularly Jackie, who has been nursing some illness as well and still spent plenty of time to help us out and to challenge us and to do the right thing. So we should thank officers. I should thank councillor Rutter on his first budget speech. Excellent job, John. Got through the points we needed to. I would never make such an innuendo at the start, though, and I'll, I'll make sure, I was going to say I'll discipline you, but that again is, we're just, we're not going down that path. I mean, and given what happened during public questions in this council, I suppose we should be thankful that Labour has allowed us to ask anything about their budget whatsoever. But let's go through some of the points that came up. So I'll talk about the park bit first, Freddie, because I was at ONS when you were there. I was chairing it. We all heard that there will be choices to be made. We heard from officers, we heard from yourself. You probably won't have enough money to do everything you want to do. Play equipment is expensive. As councillor Rutter alluded to, we are spending north of £100,000 in Ingle and Tamsden Naval Council to revolutionise one of the most deprived parts of our city with brilliant play equipment. Choices, you are deciding to go for a bank instead of more play equipment. And so when you come up with your play strategy, your choice, if you come to our, this council and say, this is our play strategy, we would love to have done more, but... The but is that usually you don't have enough money. And it will be entirely on every single person in the Labour group if you vote down this amendment. You have made a choice that you would rather speculate on a bank than help the people of Preston with something tangible. And no, yeah, you know, I love the fact, if anyone didn't hear that from mine who said, oh, that will be on a focus leaflet. Yeah, it will be because what you're doing is stupid. And what we're suggesting, we're proud of. And it was really interesting because I've said for years, and it's still true, that when I knock on doors, I knock on thousands of doors, I love it, it's the best part of being a councillor, no one ever mentions ever the Preston model or the Preston bank. But now that you're wasting a million pounds' worth of money on it, you better believe it's coming up. And when we say to them, what would you rather have? A Preston bank with zero guarantees of any investment? And as Neil pointed out to councillor Wise, you have zero guarantee of the HQ being here. You have zero guarantee of a penny of investment being here. You have zero guarantee of any branches happening here because you are not allowed to be in control of it. That is in your paper. If that bank, which has to be at arm's length from this council, decides, actually, it might be better for us to be with other large banks in Manchester or we'll get a greater return on our investment by investing in areas in Liverpool, you have no say over that at all. That is in your paper. That is why, and because Mark was right, when you first came up with this idea of a bank, we allowed you to come up with the feasibility study on it. We voted in favour because we wanted to say, okay, show us your numbers. And when you came back and said, you know, it's going to be a bank that's for the poorest, that's actually going to charge them £60 a year and it's a bank that we have no idea where any of the money has gone into it, will actually come back into the city, we thought it was a stupid idea. And so since that point, we have not given you any support on it. And you know what? If you were to go out to any member of the public and say, would you like a speculative bank where the... And let's not forget, the officers classified that money, you've already put in those £250,000 of shares as high risk. The likelihood, it's not just probable, it is likely we will get nothing back from that at all. Choices, you are choosing to risk that money instead of putting it into parks or other things in our city. Now, Freddie Bailey also talked about, sorry, cabinet member, councillor Bailey, thank you, Freddie, also talked about the pavilion, and he was right to correct you. He was absolutely talking about the pavilion when he said far too soon and one of their top priorities. We are so glad, Freddie, it's one of your top priorities. We've only been banging on about this for three years. You know, it's only lost hundreds of thousands of pounds over three years while you go on some ideological kind of streak of thinking nothing in the private sector or the charitable sector can ever do it as well as Preston City Council. And we have no problem with Preston City Council running some services. That is part, that is part of the mix. But the fact is, you are so ideologically blinkered to think that you could run something better than professionals who do it for a living continuously and have done for decades. And you are still losing money. You are still losing £75,000 despite the best efforts of staff and officers. You are wasting people's money. And it's brilliant to see that we've got lots of money coming into the budget from all that new house building. £4 million from the new homes bonus. It is lovely to see that, despite the audit report red flags that I assume most of you guys are aware of. But it doesn't mean you can throw away money. It doesn't mean you shouldn't get started on the Guildhall because as councillor Ward perfectly put in, this city council will not exist going forward. We have an obligation to make sure that Preston is as good as it can be going forward with whatever uniform authority we end up with. And you guys talk about the Guildhall in your budget documents, not a penny of money towards seeing what's going to happen next. Now, some of you might want the Guildhall to limp on for another 25 years until its natural build life comes to an end. Some of you might want to, as explained, knock it down, give an opportunity for a brand-new conference centre or something like that. Personally, I have a lot of sympathy with that view. But you can't do any of that until you know the facts on it, of which point our budget is the only one saying we should get the facts on it. Because what else comes up a lot on the door is what the hell's going on with the Guildhall? And it's a centrepiece of our city and you guys are pushing it into the long grass. I see if I've actually, yeah, councillor Wise also said about, I'm going back to the bank just because I realised that. Councillor Wise also said, you know, we're putting our money where our mouth is. It's not your money, it's Preston taxpayers' money. And we have to be responsible with it. And again, it's about a choice you're making. You can't guarantee any investment and we instead will put it straight into the people. So I'm just going to talk about a couple of the other bits. So we've talked about that, we talked about tree replacement, making sure things are right. You know, just sensible little things that come up from our residents. This is what Lib Dems do better than any other political party. We do about community politics, which is why you guys are losing seats. That's why we're gaining seats and look at our numbers now, you know. So if you, I mean, by all means, keep doing what you're doing. You can have a chuckle and think yourself above the people of Preston that tell us these things. We're actually there on the doorstep, hearing what people want. And if you want to put this to the test, we will see how you do in May and we'll see how we do in May. And we'll just see if you're still chuckling on May the 2nd. But because we believe this is a budget amendment that is designed to do what the people of Preston want us to do, is give them better facilities, give them a better Preston future. And I recommend all of you with an independent mind vote in favour of our amendment. Thank you.
Councillor Rollins, will you want to respond to this amendment before we go to a named vote?
What do you think? Well, you know, I was going to try and avoid the insults, but, you know, our policies are stupid, apparently. That was, that was one of the most obnoxious John Potter speeches in... That was, that was one of the most obnoxious John Potter speeches in, and there's been quite a few, so. What, what, what you're just not getting, what you don't want to get with the bank, because you don't believe in it. What you don't want to get with the bank is that we are interfering in the capitalist economy to try and tackle one of the most exploitative aspects of capitalism, where, you know, financial, financial institutions control the money and it funnels upwards away from the people who actually create it, the workers. So we want a local institution with the right ethos, with a co-op ethos, a co-op bank with a co-op ethos that lends money to, to local people, to local businesses where they, they can't get it right now. And there are vast amounts of people out there who can't get the loans from the high street banks. So here says, there's loads of banks out there. Well, there isn't actually. Compared to other countries, it's a tiny amount of banks on that high street and they're not lending to the right people and they don't have the right ethos. They exist to make money out of the people who go through the door. That's, that's it. You did forget the formby classic with my little stick of Guildhall rack, but I'll play that later. I think a couple of speeches did make it sound like that we're not doing anything on the Guildhall and it's just nonsense. We are, we are working constantly on the Guildhall. We're just waiting for that final report from the surveyors on how, I'm, I'm sure the rack can be fixed and, you know, but, but it's what it costs to do. And if, if it's, if it's an extremely large amount of money, we've got a decision to make. The money you've put in this amendment, if, if the rack is fixable, it's just, it's just pointless. It's a pointless amendment because if the rack is fixable and we can afford it, we'll be fixing it and we'll be getting the Guildhall open as soon as possible. We know it's a missing piece of the dig to. We know that absolutely. And it's us that's reopened parts of the Guildhall and it's us that will reopen all of it as soon as we possibly can, if it's at all possible. We've took advice on the heritage officer idea and we've been told that it's, it's bad value for money. That, that job entails lots of different disciplines and it's much better to buy that advice in from all the different experts when we need it, as we need it, rather than have one person sat in an office here trying to do it themselves. So we won't be doing that. Doubling the parks capital, you know, I initially started off at half a million a year on the parks, but it's about capacity. It's about whether we can deliver it. We've only got so many offices. And schemes take time to, to develop and put together and draw up and procure. If we can, if we can get ahead of the game, if these officers can bring projects forward that outs, that outstrip the funding we put in, we'll find the funding. I'm quite sure this group would support, you know, any schemes that are brought forward on parks. So that, that amount we put in is not, is not a cap, it's not a limit. But there, there's a good chance it will be enough because it's, there's a lot of work involved in doing that. And if they can do the work, we'll, we'll find the cash. The cafe is just, you know, you're saying it like outsourcing is absolutely always better. You know, it was outsourced before and it was shut for ages. So people want public services, they want council services. Lots of people out there who are very happy that it's a council cafe and we are very happy and we won't be making people redones like you will.
Right, we've all finished with this amendment. Can we go to a named vote, please?
Thank you, members. As usual, names in alphabetical order, starting with councillor Afslaw. Councillor Atkins.
Pardon councillor Atkins?
Can you clarify your vote, please? Councillor Bailey. Councillor Bailey. Councillor Bell. Councillor Brooks. Councillor Brown. Councillor Close. Councillor Coopland. Councillor Crowe.
Against.
Councillor Darby. Councillor Desai.
Against.
Councillor Duke. Councillor Dwyer. Councillor Green. Councillor Greg. Councillor Guyce. Councillor Henshaw. Councillor Hindle. Councillor Holmes. Councillor Hull. Councillor Ickbell. Councillor Jewell. Councillor Kelly. Councillor Khan. Councillor Colbacky. Councillor Landlis. Councillor Little. Councillor McMahon. Councillor Natha. Councillor Patel. Councillor Peak. Councillor Potter. Councillor Reesbeck. Councillor Rawlinson. Councillor Rutter. Councillor Saxena. Councillor Sarwar. Councillor Thompson. Councillor Van Merlo. Councillor Vora. Councillor Ward. Councillor Mr Whitton. Councillor Mrs Whitton. Councillor Wise. Thank you, members. We'll just tally those up.
The Liberal Democrat amendment has fallen, twenty five against nineteen four. Does that mean we have to take the Conservative? Well, no. Bear with us a minute. The Conservative group have an amendment to the Cabinet budget proposal and the council tax resolution, and these are on the blue sheets. Councillor Landlis, will you be moving this amendment?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yeah, well, here we go again. I think this is about the fourth or fifth time of presenting a budget on behalf of Conservatives. Yeah. It's funny coming third because a lot of the stuff that I'm gonna say, I'm gonna keep it a bit brief because I'm gonna go in round in circles. A lot of the stuff we've already discussed. My first pleasant duty is to thank Jackie Wilding and her team, in particular Lee Hurst, for their help and indeed patience dealing with somebody like me who is not exactly a financial whiz kid. Just in opening remarks, what a difference a year makes. So much has happened in this last year. I'm, you're gonna get a shock across in, in those benches. I'm actually gonna sort of pay with semi compliment that an awful lot has happened. You know, the opening of Animate being probably the highlight of the, of the year so far. But, you know, what's happened recently in, in the money that has been made available has given us, you know, a pleasant duty of supporting a more robust budget and ensuring that there is long-term sustainability in council funds, which I must pay great compliments to the finance team for ensuring that that we continue to see an improving situation. As I said at the start of my speech, you'll be relieved to know I'm not gonna waffle on. But merely to present our bit of the amendments, which are quite clear in front of you on the sort of semi-blue sheet. If I go to the sort of negative bit first and then I'll go on to the sort of more positive stuff, we're gonna go round at that age-old discussion about the bank and give Valerie yet another opportunity to leap to her feet. But, you know, you can, I'll keep it brief Valerie and maybe, you know, you won't have to give your argument as well, but in, in our group principally, we are, we are against the principle of making an investment in a bank. We don't feel comfortable with it. And that is therefore, I mean, I can go into the ways and why we've taken it out of the budget. It's quite clearly in front of you. And I don't propose to sort of ponder on it any further, really. What, what I'm really moving on to is, is the growth items within the Cabinet growth proposals. You'll be surprised again to see that we pretty well, you know, support them all. We see this as a sensible, we see it as a safe, cultural, healthy set, set of growth proposals. You know, that there are very good things within that. I mean, I just pray that everything comes to fruition and that we manage to recruit the right sort of people and see services, et cetera, improving in our city. I just made one tiny plea. If you read out of interest the response to the budget proposals that you had in front of you, that Whittingham Parish Council very kindly decided to respond in some detail. And can I make a plea that in the play areas funding, I've, I've heard the arguments this afternoon, that there is some thought given to the play areas in, particularly in the rural areas. But if we can, if I can move on to our, our extra bits of growth that we're proposing, again, the first one that we've sort of discussed already is the heritage officer. Indeed, in Preston at the moment, I'm safely informed that there are at least seven hundred and seventy listed buildings. And what the, the role of the heritage officer would be to support heritage groups, property owners, friends groups, to ensure that these buildings are well-maintained and kept up to standard. Important buildings, for example, such as Edith Rigby House, Arkwright House are about, are brought back into an acceptable standard. The other role, we see the important role the heritage office is statutory inspections of listed buildings to ensure that they are kept in the, the right condition and, and also a constant update of the heritage list. We need, we need to ensure civic pride in our buildings and it is woeful to see how some of them are beginning to rot. And second, our second growth area is a youth project worker for North Preston and surrounding areas. Bit of an odd sort of title, North Preston and surrounding areas, but I couldn't actually think of anything better to describe the sort of north part of the city. We see the importance of the new youth facility in the city centre and what a good thing we hope it's going to be. But what we feel is we need to encourage sort of young people who live out in the rural areas or in Cotum, that, you know, the new expanding estates up in north-west Preston and slightly further around Fullwood and Grayfriars, that, that they, A, we need somebody to encourage youth to gather constructively, either in the village halls or whatever. And what we're hoping through sort of starting to get youth more involved in doing community things is that they might be encouraged to come down and use the facility that's available to them in town. I think the younger people further out need encouraging to come into town to take advantage of these facilities. And that's what we want to do, have an officer to encourage and to start getting things going in our area. That's really the basics of our amendment. It, it's, you know, terrible, I mean, eyesight's terrible. I can't even read my own notes. I'll just put them down. It's just to say, we're presenting a safe and robust amendment and I really hope that you've enjoyed listening to me and thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Landlis. Is there anyone want to? Have we got a second here?
Yes, Mr Mayor, I'm second.
Councillor Thompson, do you want to wait to reply?
I shall, yes, Mr Mayor. Thank you.
Anybody make a comment? Councillor Potter, please.
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. Yeah, my group will be supporting these amendments mainly because most of them are within our budget. So it's a very simple equation for us. It's, it's better than theirs, not quite as good as ours, but we'll be supporting it because it's, it's a, it's a step on the right direction.
So you're supporting it because your amendment was defeated, is that correct, councillor Potter? Councillor Bell.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I think we'll agree that the bank's probably been debated to death and the only thing we can agree on is that we disagree on that matter. So I'd just like to bring up the, what councillor Landlis said around the North Preston youth project or youth worker. I heard some of the opposition members earlier, sorry, the leadership members say this budget represents the people of Preston. Well, sometimes I'm not sure how you guys can say that because you've got no one in Cadley, no one in Grayfriars, no one in Cotum and Ingle, no one in the rurals, just one in Sherrill Green. So well done, Connor, for getting north of Sherrill Green Lane. Parks as well, like, you know, parish councils, we're very like strong on that. Parish councils, having to pay for parks, I'm really strong on parks, but, you know, like the Lib Dems are trying to be a man of the community. When I'm out on the doorstep knocking on doors, all I hear from people in my area is what Preston council are doing about young people in my area. The parks are terrible. This isn't very good. So that's why I support councillor Landlis's, you know, motion about moving, you know, getting a youth worker, hopefully encouraging people to use the facility in centre of Preston, but maybe some outreach services as well. Maybe just for the record, I don't hear anything about banks either. And I'm a member of Broughton Parish Council, so I also know how hard running a cafe is regarding Avon and Park, but that's also been defeated. So let's not stand up on that. And just as a separate note, I've stood up in this chamber many times on kind of financial proposals and, you know, I'll get challenged or I challenge council members that, you know, risks are often mitigated by hope. Financial projections often seen, you know, at best fantasy, sorry, at worst fantasy and sometimes just, they're just a bit optimistic. And I get told I was disrespectful of the officers, so I don't want to clarify. I think the officers do a great job, but you guys on the other side move things. So when I challenge you, I'm challenging you for why you think that's a good thing to move. So I would just, you know, continue to hold, hold all these members who count on budget members and just let risks, I really hope, hope that members can vote for councillor Landlis's amendment. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Bell. Councillor Dwyer, do you want to say something?
I do. Since I've been name checked, I may as well, Mr Mayor. Thank you. I will say that by all accounts, it is commendable that the Conservatives, and they have a modern justice occasion, highlighted the lack of youth provision to an extent in the northern part of the city. It is commendable. However, I will point them to the fact that we are about to discuss the youth strategy and there will be a number of positive impacts of that. And that has been consulted on by over a thousand young people from across the city. And lastly, with some personal interest, I might remind Mr Bell that Labour does listen to all of Preston because we do have a Labour MP in the north of it.
Quiet now. Thank you councillor Dwyer. Can I just, it's not on this amendment, but can I just say, I was at, we know the youth zone's being built across the road, which is brilliant. Just to say, the youth zone is gonna be, is gonna be called Vault Youth Zone. Vault is a name that the two thousand young people came up with. It's overcoming things, that sort of thing. It's not a part of the pub, okay? But the vault offices currently are at forty six But the vault offices currently are at 46 Glovers Court. I was there yesterday afternoon meeting the staff, the workers, and this youth forum that councillor Dwyer referred to is well up and running with all sorts of bodies. So from a North Preston point of view, it should get brought up there, councillor Bell. Thank you. Right, back to councillor Rollinson before we vote on this amendment, please. Hang on a minute, what's that councillor Brown?
I was sort of, I formally seconded instead of coming back later, so do you want me to do that now?
No, you're on the main motion.
My apologies, sorry, sorry.
You're not paying attention councillor Brown. Councillor Rollinson?
It would be remiss of us not to mention that youth services is the responsibility of the place up the road run by the Conservatives. So, you know, it's great that this council is doing so much on youth services when we have no direct responsibility for it, but we had to step in and fill the gap, just like we have on other things. But, you know, we've provided the land for the youth zone, we've put in some money in, we've supported the new one in Frenchwood, the Foxton one, which is going to be fantastic too, and they're working together as well. And the youth strategy, when this idea came forward, I didn't think we'd be able to do it, to be honest. I mean, why would we produce youth strategy? It's not, it's not really our job, but they've done it anyway because it's a massive problem. And the youth zone is for everybody, yeah, I know, it's in the centre and obviously people, young people in the rural areas are further away from it. Let's hope, you know, the bus services keep up and so that they can get to it. But I've got nothing against these ideas, but I think you do need to go and talk to your friends at county hall to do a bit more. The play strategy again is for the whole city. I think if you went back through cabinet reports over a number of years, I think the parks and play area schemes that have been brought to cabinet would mostly be outside the inner urban area. Quite often, they are easier schemes for the officers to bring forward because a lot of them have friends groups who raise money and make bids and get match funding. So there's been no strategy at this council by officers or these members to not spend in rural areas and in the suburbs. That's not happened at all. And the play strategy is likely to be delivered in a way whereby we'll do the easiest ones first probably, to bring them forward quicker so that we can make those more improvements quicker. So it won't be down to, you know, where they are, we won't be doing the inner urban areas first because it's our areas. We haven't done that over the years and we won't, we won't do it. We'll do what's, you know, what's feasible, what's best and quickest to get the most improvements. And I have a lot of sympathy with what you're proposing, especially about young people. They've been really neglected and let down and they've suffered because of the cuts, because of Covid and Brexit and the policies, their opportunities have been so restricted. And I'm really pleased that this council is doing some work on it.
Right, starting again.
Oh, well, go on. Oh, sorry. After you, I beg your pardon. Right, we'll go to the name vote again on this amendment. Oh, sorry, you were jumping gun then. Councillor Thompson, are you coming in on the...
Yes, yes, Mr Mayor. Yeah. Thought you missed me out then, I was... Can I just say, I mean, we haven't made that many amendments, there's not a lot to it there. There's obviously the bank, and I'm not going to say anything about that, I think there's enough been said there. I wouldn't call it a stupid idea, I think it's an ideological idea and I don't think this group would have taken the risk with public money, but that's all I'm going to say on it. I think there are a lot of good things that have come out, the substantive budget, more money for arts and culture. We know that the arts and culture offer is something that generates cities and I think that's great. I never thought I'd hear councillor Rollinson saying we're going to put more money into the mayorality. I remember one time when that would definitely not have happened. But anyway, so that's a good thing going forward as well. I suppose in the back of our mind as well, we've got to bear in mind that how long have we got as a council? That's the next thing, but we'll get to that when we do. The thing about the heritage officer, I think it is fairly important. I know Harry said, what is it, 770 that you've had? Well, I think there's 768 at the moment because a couple of months ago, one listed building was knocked down in Woodplumpton, there was another one about 18 months ago in the rural areas. So I think we do need a heritage officer. And I mean, if he does heritage and planning, then you've got that facility. Because at the moment, they're actually, they've got an agency heritage officer and you know they're going to cost us a lot more money than a heritage officer, one of our own. So I would like to see that. The youth project in the rurals, that unfortunately, a lot of kids are not like I was, whereas I just disappear with a bottle of pop and not come back until tea time into the countryside or down the beach. And kids don't do that now, they want some more organised stimulus. And I think the youth zone, I know they've fallen foul of it at county, but you've stepped into the plate there. Thank you councillor Rollinson, provided a wonderful youth project over here. But it is a case that times have moved on and we are in a situation where I would like to see more involvement in the rurals and the food area, or the bringing them into the city and seeing what is offered. Because what's offered there is very good. And I believe that they have got the ability to fund it themselves as well going through the year. So, yeah, so that was the thinking on that. So I would just like to say, I highly recommend this budget. I know that with the amount, only six of us here and there's a lot over there, I'm probably better off going for a cup of tea than speaking here today. But anyway, we're having done the duty for the day. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Thompson. I'm glad you disappeared with your bottle of pop and came back when it were empty. We're all glad, thanks. I will move to the named vote for the Conservative amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Commencing with councillor Afsal, councillor Atkins, councillor Bailey, councillor Bell, councillor Brooks, councillor Brown, councillor Close, councillor Coopland, councillor Crowe, councillor Darby, councillor Desai, councillor Duke, councillor Dwyer, councillor Green, councillor Greg, councillor Guyes, councillor Henshaw, councillor Hindle, councillor Holmes, councillor Hull, councillor Iqbal, councillor Jewell, councillor Kelly, councillor Khan, councillor Colbacky, councillor Landlis, councillor Little, councillor McMahon, councillor Natha, councillor Patel, councillor Peak, councillor Potter, councillor Reisbeck, councillor Rollinson, councillor Rutter, councillor Saxena, councillor Sawa, councillor Thompson, councillor Van Meelo, councillor Voyra, councillor Ward, councillor Mr Whitam, councillor Mrs Whitam, councillor Wise. Thank you, members.
The amendment defeated 2519. Thank you. Now we move to the substantive motion. Councillor Brown, you're second in the substantive motion, do you wish to speak?
I do, Mr Mayor, thank you very much. Obviously, this council is coming to an end as we know. So again, another amazing budget for Martin, ourselves as a Labour group and thanks again to all the officers. You know, we're having a bit of a déjà vu here, we're seeing the Tories and the Lib Dems getting together and going into some kind of informal coalition. I remember when, we had the Liberals quored about the number of seats that they have at the moment. I remember when they were reduced to five seats in this council chamber, we've been at a similar amount for some time due to the relationship you had with the Conservative Party in Preston and beyond. So if you want to go down that path again, please do and we would welcome that. But within this budget, there are some amazing things and I'll just three things I want to highlight. Obviously, us looking at selective licensing, we do speak to people, it's often people who are struggling in the most difficult economic circumstances. We're proud to represent these diverse working class communities and private landlordism is an issue within our communities. So in terms of taking action and dealing with that, we're going to do something substantial and we are minded to move forward with introducing licensing of private landlords, which again is very, very positive. In addition to work from councillor Afsal around basically banning new HMO properties through the planning system, which is good. Obviously, prior tipping councillor Bailey doing great work there, we're going to substantially increase and deal with that issue, but also ridding this city of the evil Conservative Liberal Democrat policy that meant that the poorest in our communities had to pay at least 20% council tax. This will save those less well-off in our community around £300. And people might laugh, they might take the mick out of us for that, but those people on the breadline, these ideas really matter. And again, it's this Labour council that's doing it, we wanted to do it years ago, doing it now. But obviously, we do seem to have a bit of a coalition between the Tories and Lib Dems again. And I cast our mind back to 2011, where at the beginning of the year, the Conservatives and Lib Dem were in charge of this council together, or the Conservatives supported by the Liberal Democrats. Obviously councillor Jewell here as well from that period back. I just want to say how things have changed. What we did immediately is we moved on from the failures of corporate-led regeneration, we abandoned the Tyburn project, we now are investing over £10 million in city regeneration. It's not just current schemes, it was Preston Markham and Preston Bus Station, collectively taking the investment to £150 million, primarily in public ownership and supporting local businesses. We have Common Construction, who are doing the Harris and have done lots of other work. They have spent 71% of their spend with Preston-based companies as a major contractor, very, very positive indeed. And there will be 640 jobs, as I said before, potentially 1,000 plus with the knock-on multiplier effect. If you don't know what multiplier effect is, please read an economics textbook. And then additionally, we have the Conservatives, supported by the Lib Dems in 2011, who oppose the real living wage. Councillor Jewell was in this chamber and he voted against the real living wage. We pushed that through because there's a bit of a split in the Liberal Democrat group at this moment in time. We now have thousands of people who have been, had a pay rise for our support for the real living wage. We have a vast majority of our public sector that are living wage employers and under councillor Valerie Wise, obviously we're now a living wage city. We also had a Tory council back then, again, supported by the Lib Dems, who actually refused to do things like fly the LGBT pride flag above the town hall. We did it immediately. And we've done so much under councillor Khan, supporting things like Preston Pride, supporting other equality initiatives, having anti-racism events and a council that puts equalities first, and also doing what we're doing around living safety. It's very positive again. And we also had a Tory council supported by the Lib Dems who were ambivalent about affordable housing. We in this council have provided or facilitated around 1,400 new affordable homes since we got in. This is an issue that the Liberals and Tories would scoff at, saying it's just not an issue, why you're prioritising it. We represent these diverse working class communities, we know how people need to have an affordable home and we've made sure that we have done that and we're moving forward with council housing. We have a community wealth building approach, looking at cooperative housing projects involving our traveller community, that we're going to get evicted by the behaviour of the Conservative-led county council, and we're looking at community land trust, working with churches and religious institutions to provide land for new affordable housing. We have a council now that tackles the climate emergency seriously. Everything we're doing is about trying to move towards net zero. And also what we've done for all our communities, we've provided dozens of new food hubs and pantries for the poorest residents and these save people up to £30, £40 a week, very positive indeed. And we also want to, as Martin said about the failures of catheters, and we want to expand the democratic economy. We've got nearly 10 new worker-owned firms, we're working on having free cooperative broadband for many of our residents, we invested in the bank, we have community-owned venues like the Ferret, which we helped save, an amazing venue that had Ed Sheeran and others. We've got an in-sourcing agenda and we've got the cooperative housing project I referred to earlier. We have the courage to try and change the system, you acquiesce to it. And what you do is you actually, for your inability to stand up to powerful interests and wealthy individuals and being a friend of the merchant bankers, you then just misrepresent everything we say just to try and win seats. But obviously, people aren't stupid and they eventually see through it as they did a few years ago when you reduced to five councillors. Additionally, councillor Coopland, obviously working in many of the communities we represent, those diverse working class communities, she has put substantial resources into our less well-off areas for health. And obviously, you see many of those reports going forward now. And councillor Hindle as well, you know, looking at a renaissance of arts, culture and events, including the reopening of the Guildhall foyer and expanded events programme. And what did we have last year in this city? We had the likes of Sting playing in one of our beautiful parks. Lots of criticism on social media about how a lack of ambition with arts and culture, you know, having a manic sting, all the rest of it. It was actually an amazing event for Preston and we're going to do a lot more. And we have a council that now is taking homelessness very seriously. We're going to reopen a homeless shelter, as we just said earlier, tripling overnight provision. And obviously, councillor Desai doing much around having service transformation and digital inclusion. So obviously, as Frank Sinatra said, you know, and now the time is near, we must face a final curtain for this Preston City Council. We've got so much we could be proud of and our focus has always been putting ordinary people first and this budget will continue to do this. So I'm happy to formally second it. And again, praise Martin with the amazing work he's done over 14 years now, setting this radical agenda for Preston council, benefiting many residents and also having a very healthy financial position. The Lib Dems, a few years ago, were going to go bankrupt. If you look at our reserves now, about £60 million, very, very healthy indeed. So I'm happy to formally second this, thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Brown. Councillor Rollinson, do you want to come back before we go to the vote? We'll carry on with the named vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Starting again with councillor Afsal, councillor Atkins, councillor Bailey, councillor Bell, councillor Brooks, councillor Brown, councillor Close, councillor Coopland, councillor Crowe, councillor Darby, councillor Desai, councillor Duke, councillor Dwyer, councillor Green, councillor Greg, councillor Guyes, councillor Henshaw, councillor Hindle, I think councillor Holmes has left the chamber, but councillor Hull, councillor Iqbal, councillor Jewell, councillor Kelly, councillor Khan, councillor Colbacky, councillor Landlis, councillor Little, councillor McMahon, councillor Natha, councillor Patel, councillor Peak, councillor Potter, councillor Reisbeck, councillor Rollinson, councillor Rutter, councillor Saxena, councillor Sawa, councillor Thompson, councillor Van Meelo, councillor Voyra, councillor Ward, councillor Mr Whitam, councillor Mrs Whitam, councillor Wise. Thank you, members. Thank you, members.
The substantive motion is carried, 24 to 18 and one abstention. Thank you. We've been at this now for over two hours, I'm going to take a break for the toilet, we'll be back here in 15 minutes, sorry, 25 past. Item seven, civic financial contract. This is a report on a civic financial contract for 2025. councillor Rawlinson, do you wish to move the report?
It's fairly straightforward, it's just renewing the software for the finance team, it really wouldn't be a good time to change it, it would be a huge undertaking to change it, and I propose that we stay with the same software for now, and I'm sure somebody's going to have a very big job to do if three different councils with three different types of software get together.
Is this report seconded? Thank you councillor Wise. Anybody to say anything on this report? Move to the vote, all in favour, please show. Thank you, anyone against? Any abstentions? Thank you, it's carried. Item eight is a report on an invitation for proposals for a single tier of local government. The report was not available at the time the agenda was published, as the most up-to-date information was necessary to put before members on this important issue, and it cannot wait until the next meeting, as members must be updated on this proposed major structural change to two-tier local government. As such, I've agreed to accept this report as an urgent item. councillor Brown, you moving this report?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor, it would be helpful next time if someone tells me we're going back in as leader, because I was not aware, but there we are.
Okay, councillor Brown, you were told 25 past.
There's usually a bell or something, Mr Mayor, anyway. Or there was a bell sometime, but anyway, yes, so obviously, this report is for noting, what we do know is that there will be a Lancashire mayor in 2026, which has been confirmed by Deputy Prime Minister Angela Rayner, and obviously, what this report does is set out the progress that we're making, and it is for noting. Lancashire leaders, there's 15 of us, we are meeting very regularly now to try and form some kind of consensus, or at least a majority opinion around how restructuring and devolution should work. But very importantly, when we do put in our final submissions to the council, we don't have to just say what we want within Preston, who we want to partner with, but also how we'd like to see the rest of Lancashire be organised, so whether that's one, two, three, four, five councils, whatever. As a political grouping, we will be putting our first initial proposals forward soon after the 21st of March, which is the deadline, but what we're trying to do is get all 15 Lancashire leaders to support a letter which will look at the range of options that we're going to pursue, and then this matter will come back to council for a final decision whilst negotiations continue across the Lancashire family. Within our Labour group, we have adopted a position which was unanimous, often within our group, but it was unanimous, and obviously we'll make that public after the 21st of March. However, we must take the opportunity for the new powers and resources that will come with devolution, but I'm sure it's done in a way which is best for Preston and aligns with our values in the circumstances that we find at this moment in time. I just want to finally thank both councillor Thompson and councillor Potter, because I know we've had formal private discussions about this, and when we do actually say how we'd like Preston council to transform into a new body, obviously a larger body with partners, it would be really good if we could have every single hand in this council chain go up for it, Mr Mayor. So that's an update, it's just for noting, and if there's any questions, observations, comments, opinions, please send them my way, thank you very much.
Is this report seconded? Thanks councillor Hull. councillor Potter.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, even though this is for noting, I think it's an important development. Local government reorganisation is the biggest change in local government for 50 years, however, I think it's much needed. I think we've been fairly united in this chamber about the need to move away from a two-tier authority because of its inefficiencies, and it's very interesting listening to council leaders that have already gone through it, it will be painful, there will be weird random boundaries, but there's weird random boundaries now, you know, anyone that lives in Longridge, you can cross over the road, you're suddenly in River Valley, the next second you're in Preston, you know, there will always be little obscurities like that. But I quote councillor Nick Ireland, who's the Lib Dem leader of the new Dorset unitary, he says they have got more efficient, silos have been broken down, and actually, the problems we have, regardless of who's in control of county council, the fact that sometimes this council is pitted against Lancashire County Council when we're all trying to serve the people of the area is ridiculous. So I think it's much needed, it will be painful, it will be frustrating, we've seen in the budget documents, we're having to pay for a senior officer to help with the transition of this, so all of us are going to have to be very patient, and hopefully, Matthew, we can all speak in one voice when we have to announce what our preferred partners will be, but yeah, so we are in favour, like I said, this is just for noting.
Sorry, is there anybody else who wants to say anything? Do you want to say anything? Are we all in favour of this report? Please show, sorry. Thank you, anybody against? Any abstentions? Thank you, carried. Item nine is a report on the prevention of ill health support grants, 2025-2026. The report was not available at the time the agenda was published due to the timing of when the council became aware that various funding elements were being made available to deliver on health inequality in Preston. I have therefore agreed to consider the item as an urgent one as the council needs to start on this as soon as possible. councillor Coopland, do you wish to move this report?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yeah. The council's asked to support and involve the involvement of health initiatives being proposed by Lancashire County Council, Lancashire South Cumbria Integrated Board and Cancer Alliance Team and agree the recommendations it set out in paragraph two, 2.1. Preston City Council has taken an active role in driving health and wellbeing across the city and has converted and chaired the Health and Wellbeing Partnership. The council has been offered the funding for two local partner agencies to support and deliver the health prevention across the city. The funding is made up by £165,000 from Lancashire County Council Local Stop Smoking Services, £30,000 from Lancashire South Cumbria Integrated Board to increase the uptake of vaccinations and immunisation in some of the most deprived Preston wards, £70,000 from ICB's Cancer Alliance Team to increase the number of people accessing cancer screening programmes earlier. The three funded streams align with the ethos of Preston Health and Wellbeing Partnership to work collaboratively to improve health and well within the city and by listening to people in their communities and neighbourhoods. The data shows that local residents often have low level of access, worse outcomes and poor experience of services. And the three initiatives will help tackle this situation. The council and partners want to focus, deliver on enabling grassroots groups, community-based groups and voluntary organisations who are the nearest to communities and are trusted by them to work with those who often lead complex lives and can resist treatment. Through working with our communities, we believe we can deliver real challenges for residents, particularly those in deprived areas. And for that reason, I commend the report to the council. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Coopland. Is it seconded? councillor Hull seconded that, I'll make a note of that, will you? councillor Sarwa, do you want to say something? That's enough. Right, we'll move to the vote, all in. Anybody else want to say anything, sorry? Move to the vote for this report, all in favour, please show. Thank you, anyone, oh, me, anyone against? Who was against? No. Any abstentions? Carried, thank you. Item ten is a report on Preston Youth Strategy, 2025 to 2035. councillor Coopland, do you wish to move this report?
I do, yes, Mr Mayor. Before I move the report, Mr Mayor, I'd like to say that I have made notes from what my councillors on the other side regarding youth delivery in rural areas. And I do know there are officers who work really hard to do road shows across Preston in terms of connecting with the youth and partners in rural areas to see what the real needs are. So I'd like to move the report. The council's asked to adopt and support the strategy to work to build aspirations for the young people of our city and to support them in responding to the challenges that they face. The council has led a programme of work to develop a new youth strategy for the city which will align with the work underway to develop a strategy for the city and be part of the refreshed co-prep plan. Whilst Young People's Services are not a statutory function, the council has provided support and leadership throughout community engagement. Fifteen members of the youth network were offered to be a part of the youth strategy steering group. Young people across the city were asked for their views on the future of Preston and what matters to them and what support they need. Fourteen hundred responded and the key results were the top three problems were vaping, drug and alcohol and violence. The top three things to change, make things cheaper, free for young people, make the city cleaner with better upkeep of building and roads and cheaper transport. And all the important issues will help increase in careers, employment opportunities, support for mental health opportunities to engage with physical activities. The strategy seeks to respond to the feedback and set two strategy objectives, which were youth participation influenced partnership collaboration and the fourth strategy, which was be safe, be healthy and resilient, be enabled and empowered and be ready for the future. And that has all come from the youth of Preston. So it was brilliant that we had fourteen hundred people, that was young people that were engaging in this strategy. And before I finish, I'd like to thank Michelle Pilling, the Community Engagement Safety Manager, who put this strategy together with her team. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Coopland. Is there a second to councillor Thompson? Thank you councillor Hindle, seconded it. Does anybody wish to speak about this? Yep. councillor Thompson, you wanted to speak?
Yes, Mr Mayor. Yeah, this was, I read the report and there was a little bit in there that I was a bit curious about because it's a youth strategy. But it does say the age group is from eight years to twenty-five. And I would have thought twenty-five was probably a bit older than a youth, but I don't know. Is there some sort of official definition that we have for this sort of thing? Just asking a question.
I can get back to you on that. I can go back to the officers to say why that is good, but defined age group, you know, young people are young people. So there is that collaboration across the board, but I will get back to you. Thank you.
I asked the same question yesterday when I was at the vault. And what it is, it's for possibly special needs or learning difficulties of the older, younger people, if you will. That's why it goes to twenty-five. That's what I was told, I asked that. councillor Dwyer, please?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. And as I said, I welcome this report. And a quick, just a quick clarification for councillor Thompson, I don't know if it's the case in this sense, but I do know from experience of working with youth work agencies, it tends to be that eighteen tends to be a cutoff, but it is then up to twenty-five for special educational needs and disabilities. So I think it's about just an overarching age range, just to include all. Just quickly, while we are in the chamber, I wanted to just say that in this chamber we ought to recognise the work of the Preston Youth Forum and the young people who are part of that forum. And I'm sure Mr Mayor can echo that in his role. As we've already seen from councillor Coopland and from the report, over fourteen hundred young people took part. And the young people, I think it was about forty of whom were a part of the youth forum, will have played a big role in that and have volunteered a lot of hours to that and no doubt gained a great experience and skills through it, as I remember as a thirteen-year-old of myself in the former Preston Youth Council. So look at that, it can lead to places. And I would also say that some of the members of that youth forum and of the Lancashire Youth Council were also in the House of Commons this week, speaking in the youth parliament debate. And I think that the Preston City Council ought to recognise and congratulate them on that. Thank you, Mr Mayor. Moving on, just to say that it is important, from my experience in youth voice, it's important that delivery and not just development of strategy is always co-produced. Young people typically need to see change implemented to actually see that their voice has been put into action. On a very specific point of the strategy and of the results of the consultation, I will note that fifty-three per cent of the young people consulted said that there's not enough information and support on mental health in the city. And sixty-three per cent, which is a particularly worrying stat, said that they don't know where to go or how to access mental health support in the city. Now, the strategy does include, in response to this, a commitment to delivering preventative mental health interventions as well as suicide prevention work, which is obviously welcome. And we need to see that in action. It's my hope that young people will be involved throughout that process in a meaningful manner, that it is co-produced, that communication to and with young people is improved and involved in part of that strategy. And that hopefully progress in that area specifically, I would hope that the cabinet member can perhaps keep myself involved as member champion and the rest of those in the chamber. But I do very much welcome this and it's great to see youth voice in action in Preston.
Thank you councillor Dwyer. councillor Brown, please.
Mr Mayor, just briefly, I just want to commend councillor Coopland and I know there's been other members as well involved in this strategy drawing it up. I mean, you know, we've got to do this because if we're going to be reliant on the Tory County Council to deliver opportunities for youth, we're better asking next door's cat, honestly, they're doing absolutely nothing whatsoever. So obviously it's right that we do step in and do stuff. And obviously we have this, but additionally we have the youth so, which is an eleven, twelve million pound investment that we're paying for, it should be them. When I was a lad, you had youth workers and many of them, we've now got very few whatsoever. So again, it's just us taking back control and doing things in our own way and doing it from this council, especially in supporting youth going forward, Mr Mayor. So just a big thanks for me, for members and officers who are doing this, it's really good work. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Brown. councillor Potter, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just very, very quickly, Matthew's caught me a little bit off guard there. Just pointing out, there was a proposal for more youth workers at county last week and you abstained. So, but a couple of things I just want to point out regarding the youth forum, I just, I wonder if we could do a better job of advertising it? And I wonder if the cabinet member, member champion wants to do it? Because if you Google youth forum, it talks about meetings that happened in September and November. But if you even go onto the Preston City Council website and look at community forums, it isn't even listed. So I do wonder if we can do a slightly better job with that? Just because if they have had such a say in this consultation, then we should obviously try and welcome more people to that. And just very briefly, again, working with the cabinet member and the member champion, I've started asking questions of our officers to see if whether or not we could have members of the youth forum or maybe the youth council come and be a part of scrutiny. It works very well at Lancashire County Council as part of the education scrutiny, actually having those young voices in it. So I think having a greater openness to those people to come to scrutiny, to ask questions and more often than not, they ask quite difficult questions of officers and members when they're at scrutiny at county. So I think that might be something we should explore. And I've already started asking that question. So lovely to have you guys involved with that as well.
Thank you councillor Potter. councillor Hindle, sorry, is anybody else want to say anything? councillor Hindle, do you have a right to reply here?
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. Okay. So regarding the Preston Youth Strategy, things take time to change and you have to start somewhere. So on the 25th of August, 2022, I brought a notice of motion to this council about youth provision in Preston and how I felt that it was every councillor's duty to care about the children and young people in their wards irrespective of whether it is a statutory duty. I distinctly remember, after delivering that notice of motion, the personal verbal abuse that I received from the Liberal Democrats for bringing this forward. And I do not forget that the leader of the opposition at that time, councillor Sue Witter, actually asked them to apologise to me. So thank you, Sue. I'm still waiting for that apology, by the way. Anyway. Well, I'm so glad to report that the council did take on the recommendations from the notice of motion. And I commend the deputy chief executive, Sarah Freffle, for taking this forward and believing in the importance of this work. Also to Dave Clayton of What Would You Do, as he helped to chair the initial meetings of the forum. And our community engagement team, especially Mark Dunn and Michelle Pilling, who have worked really hard to pull all of these strands together. Mark Dunn went on to chair the Preston Youth Forum Network so that the council was pivotal and central to working collaboratively with stakeholders in our city, be it from large organisations to small voluntary groups that work with children, including staff from Lancashire County Council. It was truly collaborative and it continues to be. We have also involved staff from the outset that will run the soon-to-be-completed youth so, which will add such value to our city and provide much-needed opportunities for our youth. I've attended many of these forum meetings and at the beginning, there was a lot of backlash that the council never listened to them or support them. So it has been fantastic that over these couple of years to see the trust form and the relationships working together. When we are short of resources, joint working really does work and this is proof of that. I'm proud to support the Preston's Youth Strategy and really look forward to seeing improved outcomes for our children and young people. Our community engagement team, as you've heard, gathered extensive views of the young people. They have mapped the current youth service and club provision and found out where the gaps lie. They have looked at the barriers that young children in our city face. We said and we did. And now we have formulated Preston's Youth Strategy, 2025 to 2035, to continue this work, embed processes and as a council, continue to gain access to the voices of young people to develop this strategy. I commend it to the group.
Thank you councillor Hindle. Anyone got anything else to say? Does councillor Coopland want to come back before we vote on it? Thank you. All in favour of this report, please show. Thank you, anyone against? Any abstentions? Thank you. Item eleven is a report on the establishment of a guild committee for 2032 Preston Guild. councillor Rollinson, do you wish to move this report?
Yes, thanks. And I did mention this earlier, so hopefully we don't need to spend too much time on it. But it is quite early to do this, but I'm thankful to the officers for bringing this forward early. There are some things we can do at this time in terms of looking at how we can perhaps boost the funding and we can start to look at some guild legacy projects, which have some amazing guild legacy projects in the past, the Guild Wheel and the memorial on Loon Street. Hopefully we can do more this time. I've already been pitched a couple of ideas, which are great ideas, but they will be presented to everyone eventually. So yeah, I think there's things we can do and it sets down a marker that, you know, how important this is to Preston and hopefully we can protect it, whatever happens in the next few years.
Thank you councillor Rollinson, is that seconded? Thank you councillor Hull again. Anybody got any comments? Yes councillor Little?
Yeah, thank you. Really great to support this. I just wanted to mention one thing you brought there about the Guild Wheel. I know it's a very complex part because there's lots of areas covering lots of different boundaries and we don't have full control of the whole Guild Wheel. However, in this initial five million pounds, I think you've set out, is there a plan to refurbish and regenerate the Guild Wheel? Because as it stands at the minute, it isn't quite fit for purpose in its current state. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Little. councillor Dwyer, please?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I just wanted to very briefly just build on a few things that Martin said on the number one, I think it's key to recognise that by doing this, we're being proactive rather than reactive on as to the approach to the guild. And it does show a key commitment from this authority and from this group to ensuring it's a success, particularly in light of not too long ago, when we were the subject of rather cynical and outlandish accusations that we might not be able to fund the guild. It's important to do this now, it's about time to do it and it shows commitment also to accountability and scrutiny on the plans for the guild. It's not just the guild as an event, it is the guild as a charity and legacy project as well. And as we know, the guild still has an impact on the city in every nineteen years between that twentieth year. But furthermore, as Martin alluded to, I think we need to recognise that this isn't just about this guild, it is in the context of local re-government reorganisation, the guild and Preston as an authority have not faced this circumstance quite before. It's about showing that the guild is an important part of the city's civic heritage and that going forward, we have a commitment in whatever the new authority is to look like, that we have a commitment to preserving Preston's heritage, not just through its buildings, but through its civic traditions. And I would suggest
And I would suggest that should this be voted through and we see the success of this committee, that we look to in a future authority whilst we still exist, make a proposal that a civics committee is set up for Preston within that.
Thank you, councillor Dwyer. Councillor Hall has seconded. Do you want to say anything?
Yes, very briefly, Mr. Mayor. It's very important that we at this side of the house take the heritage of Preston very seriously, as you know. And the Guild merchant goes back, as you've mentioned before on previous occasions, to eleven seventy nine, Mr. Mayor. A part of the heritage of that that was done under a previous Labour administration was the Majesty of the Queen came and unveiled the obelisk in nineteen seventy nine as an Optus and Teneri thing. But the Guild is an important part of Preston, as all members know, because it's not only a multiplier on the economy at the time of the Guild, but it works as an accelerator. And it happens every twenty years, which is a very good thing, Mr. Mayor, because it reminds us to bring ourselves up to scratch and to showcase the things that we have for Preston. So with regard to the heritage and the Guild Wheel, of course, is a marvellous thing, again, pushed forward and initiated by Labour councillors on the county and the town, and which we are very proud. Things like Gift Ninety Two, which again was a Labour initiative and which is a great part of our heritage, because the Labour Party takes heritage much more seriously than some people on the other outside of this chamber may imagine. So with regards to that.
That speculation, councillor Hall, carry on with your statement.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. I'll end very soon, but I was on the Guild Committee that we had before the Last Guild, which wasn't brought into effect quite so early as this. But one of the things, looking prospectively with regards to our heritage as a city, is that even if the city council goes, and of course we'll all be terribly sad about that, then the Guild will continue, Mr. Mayor. And we as a heritage champions will do everything we can to establish that as a reality, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much.
Thank you for that short statement, councillor Hall. Councillor Darby.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I just want to congratulate the Labour Party on the fastest ever U turn. I can't believe we're hearing all of this passion for the heritage of Preston, barely five minutes after voting it down in the budget. Nonetheless, we do welcome the fact that this is going to be established. And I will say that the Lib Dems were calling for it a couple of years ago, and in fact, local businesses have been calling for it for a couple of years now. So yes, it's good that we're there, but let's not pretend that this is massively on time. This is catching up with the rest of the city and what you've been called on already. But we will be supporting it and I'm so pleased to hear that you're in favour of our heritage.
Thank you, councillor Darby. Councillor Kelly, please.
Yeah, it's just to acknowledge that the running for the Guild is four, five years before the actual Guild. So the decisions that we make today are important and we need to make them today if we're going to meet the requirement, which is less than seven years away.
Thanks, councillor Kelly. Councillor Colbacky, please.
Yeah, could you just clarify, this is going to be a cross-party group? And also, are you going to invite historic heritage groups to actually contribute to this? I'd just like to thank councillor Brown and councillor Wise for going to the Heritage Society meeting and start putting the necks on the line and speaking up. And also councillor Wise for actually getting some of these heritage buildings looked at. Obviously, this remedial work is very important, which is possibly a little bit too little, too late, but at least something's been done about it. Thank you very much for that. I'm not sure as well that, you know, we should be asking, you know, external people to look at Preston's heritage. You know, there's a lot of expertise in the town and I think that should be coordinated by the council, either as a council heritage officer or, you know, if we could get people, you know, maybe have some kind of forum where everybody could contribute, you know, with councillors being there.
Thank you, councillor Colbacky. Councillor Wise, please.
Yeah, just to clarify, you do need external advice because even if you had a heritage officer, they're not going to be an expert on the law. And the law is actually quite complex on this issue and that's what we're getting advice on. Because what we want to do is make sure that we're using all the appropriate opportunities and legislation available to us to actually force owners to actually take action. And so when we had this meeting yesterday, the external lawyers went through all the different bits of legislation, in minor detail, I have to tell you, but there is a lot. And it is important that we're using the right bit of legislation at the right time if we're actually not going to find ourselves in difficulties. So that's what we're doing, is making sure we're using people when it's appropriate.
Thanks, councillor Wise. Can I just say also, after that meeting, I think you're referring to at the Central Methodist Church, I went for a bit, then I had to shoot off. But I invited them all to the mayor's parlour and we went through the history with councillor Close. I think it was, I can't remember, I think it was Monday night, it might have been last week. But they had a good tour around and saw the heritage they have here as well as what they're trying to preserve outside. Councillor Rollinson, do you wish to come back on this? Sorry, everybody else finished? Yes, carry on.
The Lib Dems have been disgraceful on the Guild issue from the start. They first, they tried to claim credit for the funding of it. You know, I was on the Guild Committee in twenty twelve, the budget, it was kind of a budget committee back then, twenty eleven, twenty twelve, where we made the decisions with the officer that we'd recruited to run the Guild. And that was a cross-party committee. It's in the report that it's a cross-party committee. Of course, it will be cross-party. As we get closer, you know, there'll be different functions to do and there may need to be a separate sort of budget committee, although this has the power to spend half a million, but the whole Guild will be much more than that. So we'll have to see how it develops. Being part, you know, a big part of creating and running and delivering the Last Guild, it was never, ever going to be forgotten about or neglected. So any suggestion, which, you know, which was the suggestion by councillor Potter, because he brought a motion before I brought it up, it's all down to him, of course. It's truly pathetic, the way you twist everything. This has got nothing to do with the heritage buildings issue, nothing, nothing to do with the heritage officer or the heritage buildings issue. It's a totally separate thing. It's the Preston Guild, it's been going for eight hundred years. You're talking rubbish, it's absolute fantasy stuff in your leaflets. One of the leaflets recently said that Connor had jumped ship. Now, as I understand the term jumped ship, that's either switching wards or switching parties. He's done neither. He's still councillor for Sherry Green. It's just pure fantasy politics. So despite that, councillor Little made a half decent point. I suppose it's possible that this committee could consider, you know, past Guild Legacy projects and whether we can do anything to protect and enhance them. It's possible. Let's get it started first.
Sorry, did somebody want to say something? Right. Everybody finished saying everything? All in favour of this report, please show. Thank you. Anyone against? Any abstentions? Thank you, it's carried. Item twelve is notification of changes to membership of committees. Councillor Brown, are there any changes to committees? Councillor Potter?
I'm told there is actually. I'll defer to councillor Wise, he's also our group secretary, because I've not had anything written, thanks.
Yeah, we're just changing the sub on taxi miscellaneous from councillor Brooks to councillor Atkins.
You have no changes, councillor Potter. Councillor Thompson?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item thirteen is a leaders' report. The report has been republished in the original publication of the council agenda with alterations at paragraphs three two one and three two two. Councillor Brown, is this just for noting? Do you want to speak on it?
It's for noting, Mr. Mayor. Please do read it. There's many interesting things in it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Brown. Item fourteen is special urgency decisions, but they're enown to report to this meeting. Item fifteen, the next meeting of council is an extraordinary meeting commenced in at eleven AM on Thursday, the seventeenth of April, twenty twenty five, at the Town Hall, Preston, to confer the title of honorary alderman upon former councillor David Borrow. The next ordinary meeting of council will follow on the same day, Thursday, the seventeenth of April, at two PM in the Town Hall, Preston. No. Item sixteen. Are we listening? Now, we need to consider passing the following resolution, that the public be excluded from this meeting during consideration of the following item of business on the grounds that there is likely to be disclosure of exempt information, which is described in the paragraph of Schedule twelve A to the Local Government Act nineteen seventy two, which is specified against the heading to the item, and that in all the circumstances of the case, the public interest in maintaining the exemption outweighs the public interest in disclosing it. Are you all happy to agree the exemption and move to part B?